And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening, and I prayed for the people behind me.
A 10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire. And they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son, who lives next door, picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance to have that group of people that they were going to call. And that she saved my life that day. So absolutely, having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county, and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that go piece. And it's simply that, it's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life, and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area, and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order, not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol, came in, and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones Fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residence had already been evacuated. Residences that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
I mean, you look out my back window here on the east side, and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock, and at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do, and the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, you know, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community in a county that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately, the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate.
We've created this network, and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council or 211. We're here to support you.
And now I am even louder. Okay, so call the roll first?
Do we flag first or roll first?
Either one you want.
Okay, let's flag first. Commissioner Garst, can you lead us in the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now we'll do roll call.
Thank you. Commissioner French?
Present.
Commissioner Foley?
Present.
Commissioner McAtier?
Here.
Commissioner Garst?
Here.
And Chair Millman?
Here.
Thank you.
Are there any corrections to the agenda today?
No corrections, Chair Millman.
Okay. Now is the time for public comment on anything that is not on today's agenda. So anybody have anything to... Please, when you approach the stand, your name and where you live. And you have three minutes. Thanks.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Johanna Finney. I live here in Nevada County, and I'm introducing myself to you because I sent two emails to you asking for a meeting to discuss the Communication Tower and Facilities updated draft ordinance that you're going to see on a future agenda. Two of you have responded, and we were able to have productive meetings, so thank you. And that's where I was able to share the suggestions made by the organization called Nevada County for Safe Tech. The draft proposal we put forth was developed by the Legal Consulting Team at Children's Health Defense. That's a 501(c)(3). They are the most experienced legal team specializing in wireless land use law in the United States. The ordinance is multi-layered, and there are many definitions and technical specs that must be understood before voting. That's why our group meets with public officials to help explain the issues. Ms. Patterson, your planning clerk, forwarded my message to you on October 24th and November 4th, but I've yet to receive a response. As a constituent of this county, seeking to have an educational conversation with the folks who will be passing this on to the board, I am asking, please, that you provide the time to learn from us. We have no other way of reaching you than to request a meeting through the Planning Department. And if you wait until the public hearing to educate yourselves, it will be overwhelming, and your questions may go unanswered. We're eager to have Nevada County... We're eager for Nevada County to enact one of the most protective and forward-thinking wireless ordinances in California. It's imperative that we move forward, especially now that the FCC wants to streamline environmental and historic site review processes. The 1996 Telecom Act still gives you the ability to protect local authority on many matters. So I look forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment on something that's not on our agenda? Okay, you have three minutes. Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Renette Senham, and I'm a former city council member, mayor of Nevada City, and I've been working with Johanna on the Nevada County Wireless Telecom Ordinance. And as she had mentioned, she's been reaching out to Steve and John and Danny, and thank you, Terry and Joe, for sitting down with us. Several years ago, she and I spent many, many months and hundreds of hours drafting the Nevada City Telecom Ordinance. And to let you know and to warn you, it's a bit like Greek. It's highly technical. It takes hours of understanding. And what we're proposing is not a four-page draft, as the staff has put together, but a 40-page. And the reason why it's 40 pages is because the devil's in the details. And if you do not set that precedent now, years from now, different planning commissioners that are sitting here right now are going to have a very difficult time protecting your constituents. And I know as a former city council member, whenever a planning commissioner or city council member was reached out by their constituents, we sat down and we talked with them. We listened to them. And right now, what's happening is we're not being heard, but we know somebody on the other side of the wall is talking to your staff. That is the only way they could have drafted the four pages, because those four pages is not their field of expertise. Somebody else is giving that information. That information is highly, highly vulnerable to taking advantage of future setbacks, aesthetics, safety, you know, right-of-way concerns. This is for the benefit of all of you in your decision-making in the future, as well as future planning commissioners. So please, sit down with us, spend some time. It's highly, highly difficult. And by the way, what we're proposing has been co-drafted by Children's Health Defense National. These are some of the best telecom attorneys and experts in the nation. And we have been working with them for months. And what we've laid out for you is a telecom ordinance that is tried and true. And what I mean by that is other cities and counties have approved this telecom ordinance, and they've not once had any legal disputes whatsoever. It is the best win-win for the telecoms and your constituents, and all we want you to do is respond to us so we can sit down and have that conversation. And also, March 31st, we had a public workshop. The public came in here and addressed their concerns. It was actually for you guys. And Lisa Swarthout hosted it, but there was no planning commissioners. So we're going to send you a link to that recording. It's a couple hours of really good, deep, informative information that will help your decision-making. Would you please just take the time and look at that? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Any other non-agenda-related comments? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public comment for that portion of the meeting and move on to consent items, which in this case is the acceptance of the September 11th, 2025 Planning Commission minutes.
I'll move adoption of the consent agenda.
A second. How do you vote, Commissioner French?
Aye.
Commissioner Foley?
Aye.
Commissioner McAtier?
Aye.
Commissioner Garst?
Aye.
Chair Millman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the excitement for the day for the... I'm going to turn this over to city staff to introduce today's item.
Thank you, Chair Millman.
Sorry.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Brian Foss, Director of Planning. With me is Tyler Barrington, our former principal planner, but current housing director. And he's here to support and answer any questions. But I'll be giving the presentation regarding the proposed ordinance that would allow RVs as an alternative housing type with some development standards that I'll go over. And your commission will be making recommendations to the Board of Supervisors for final determination at a future date.
Before we get started, let me just go through kind of the setup that we think we should have today that we think will work. So we'll have a staff presentation, and then clarifying questions from the commission. And then we'll open up public hearing. My estimate is that we'll get to that somewhere shortly after 2:00. Public comments will be, let's see, three minutes apiece, and we will close those down at around 4:00. If everybody can make sure to, one, limit your comments to three minutes per person, be succinct, and if somebody has really already made your point, not repeat other people's comments if possible, so that we can hear kind of as many different ideas on the agenda item as possible. There won't be any back-and-forth conversation during the public comment. We'll save all of that for staff to address at the end of the public comment period, and then that will give us enough time to deliberate, have additional questions from commission, and wrap this meeting somewhere. The goal is going to be around 5:00 PM, but we might trail out past that. So at this point, on this particular item, the Planning Commission is making recommendations to the Board of Supervisors, and the Board of Supervisors will make final decision on this at a later hearing, probably in February or so. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to you.
Great, thank you. So I'll start with a little bit of background on how this ordinance came about. This issue, a broad issue of housing, has been a board objective for the last couple of years and has been discussed at the annual board workshop in January in 2024 and earlier this year in 2025. The board has directed all county staff to identify options for providing additional more affordable housing and more housing types in an attempt to reduce development costs, increase our housing supply, and look at ways for regulatory flexibility to increase housing options. A couple other examples of recent efforts by the county was adoption of Title 25 or limited-density owner-built housing, which is some reduced standards of the Building Code in order to promote more rural housing types, as well as tiny homes on wheels, which was heard before your planning commission earlier this year and adopted by the Board of Supervisors that allowed those specific housing types to be permitted in the county as legal permanent dwellings. So those efforts, in addition to this effort, among a number of other things that other county departments are working on, are intended to try to help and put a dent into the ongoing housing crisis in the county and throughout the state. Some of the milestones in the process that led up to today's hearing, the staff gave a work plan to the Board of Supervisors in April of this year, identifying different public meetings, different outreach steps that would be taken to get through the decision-making process and to inform the public. Staff created a webpage with the information regarding the affordable housing options and information regarding the development of this ordinance. We had a kickoff meeting in May, at the end of May, to receive comments and input from interested members of the public and other stakeholders before we began drafting the ordinance. We released a public survey that was open from July 11th through August 10th, and we received almost 2,000 responses to that survey that asked some general questions regarding should RVs and other similar-type vehicles be allowed as housing, permanent housing options? We drafted up the public ordinance and released it on August 20th. We had initial comment period closed on September 22nd, but have continued to receive and accept comments up until today. We had a number of public meetings, including the South County Municipal Advisory Commission and the Penn Valley MAC meetings, in addition to a meeting with the Board of Realtors and another public meeting that was held in this room a couple of months ago, which led us to the draft ordinance and scheduling for the public hearing portion of the ordinance adoption steps. As you mentioned, this is the meeting to make recommendations to the board, which potentially will be held at a future board meeting in early next year. The ordinance contains a number of standards that I'll go through that is specifically addressed to recreational vehicles, first of which is to adopt the... And create a definition of what a recreational vehicle is, and this is based on a state law definition. The vehicle will require DMV registration and must meet safety standards through the American National Standards Institute or the National Fire Protection Association. The standards that were developed are similar to the tiny homes on wheels ordinance that was recently adopted. This would allow permitting structures or an RV as a structure similar to how urgent care use is permitted within the county. Currently, RVs are allowed to be used for six months at a time. This ordinance builds on that and does include an initial approval and a two-year renewal requirement. So anything that's approved would be valid for two years and then require renewal to ensure that everything still meets all the code requirements and safety standards. The permitting process would be subject to zoning compliance and building permit issuance. That's essentially a site plan review to ensure that setbacks are being met, driveway standards are being met, electrical, septic, water, fire protection setbacks as well. And inspections would be provided by building department, environmental health department, fire department, code compliance as necessary, depending on how the parcel is developed and used to support the RV. For zoning and density, these would be allowed similar to an accessory dwelling unit, although not in the same category as an accessory dwelling unit. And one of the reasons for that is due to the requirement that we wanted the RV to be able to utilize existing infrastructure on the site. So if there's a main dwelling that's already developed, likely power, water, and septic has been provided to the site that the RV could hook into. Some standards include that the parcels must be three acres in size or greater. This is the minimum parcel size that's identified by the general plan in order to account for well and septic, repair areas, adequate setbacks, fire safety setbacks, et cetera. It would be allowed in the residential agriculture zones and our rural zoning districts that include agriculture, agriculture-exclusive forest, and our timber production zone. So the more rural zonings does not include R1, R2, or R3, the more single-family and higher-density zoning districts. As I mentioned, inspections would be conducted by CDA departments, including building, environmental health, planning, fire as needed upon installation of the infrastructure and of the unit on the site, and then during the two-year renewals in order to ensure that everything is still up to standards. There's a limitation that no more than one RV per parcel would be allowed and would be subject to the same setback requirements as any other traditional built housing unit, stick-built, so meet our setback standards. There are screening requirements to screen the undercarriage of the RV and ensure that the wheels and axles are concealed from view at all times during habitation, requiring a foundation to be approved that's either paved or a gravelled surface, and that the wheels remain on the vehicle inflated and in good working order. There's also a requirement that tie-downs and anchors and stabilization be implemented to ensure that the vehicle stays in the location that it's intended to stay and is secured to the pad, just like any other stick-built structure would be. There are requirements similar to traditional building types to meet wind and snow load requirements. Anything over 3,200 feet in elevation, if it can't meet snow load requirements on its own, would require a ramada or a snow cover in order to place the vehicle under that structure to be able to handle snow loads that accumulate significantly at that elevation and higher. We have habitability requirements that the RV must include sources for heat, lighting, hot and cold water, a kitchen, toilet, and sink, as well as fire extinguishers and a solid waste provisions, so that the site is served by either self-hauling the waste or served by waste manager to ensure that solid waste doesn't accumulate. Because recreational vehicles are not inspected by our building code, we have requirements that any modifications to the structure must be inspected and certified by an ANSI-trained inspector, and those inspections can be done virtually. There are some services that are available to people to do virtual inspections or have inside inspections by a trained inspector to certify any modifications to the RV that may have occurred to replace windows, add a heating source, something like that. And we're also requiring a fire protection plan, which is also required to other accessory dwelling units that identifies evacuation routes, fuel management plan to ensure that the structure meets the same standards as any other stick-built structure. We did receive a number of comments that ranged from overall support to opposition with some concerns. All the comment letters that we've received, I think dating back till May, are included in your staff report packet and attached to the memo that was handed out today that captures the comments that were received after the staff report publication. Some of the main topics of concern are health and safety, septic, trash, fire safety. As I mentioned, the standards, we do have a requirement in the draft ordinance that there are dedicated utilities required that are either self-contained within the RV or a dedicated structure separate from the main house that would provide potentially bathroom or lavatory or kitchen, but cannot be dependent on the primary dwelling. The RVs can hook up to the existing septic system as long as the system is adequate to handle an additional essential equivalent of a bedroom hookup or potentially required development of a new system based on the circumstances. And as I mentioned, all the same fire requirements as an ADU or a stick-built house are required, including water supply, defensible space, the fire safety plan, identifying evacuation routes, and meeting driveway standards up to the vehicle in order to ensure that there's safe ingress and access, ingress and egress for not only the occupants but fire personnel if needed. Other concerns about code enforcement and the ability to enforce the code if the new ordinance is passed, and we've had a number of discussions with our code compliance division and our director of code compliance, and they do feel confident that they and our, our Director of Code Compliance, and they do feel confident that they would be able to handle the complaints through our traditional process that we handle all complaints on, and that's a complaint-driven basis. Or if there's observed health and safety issues, surfacing, septic, or exposed wiring, they will go out and contact the property owner if any of those conditions are, are observed. And there's concerns about this would cause a proliferation of unpermitted or additional RVs in the county. We recognize the fact that we have many unpermitted RVs and people are living in these types of vehicles already. And so viewing this ordinance as a path to compliance, it would allow not only our code enforcement officers but homeowners and people living in the RV to go through a process and a checklist to ensure that the vehicle that they're living in is safe, it meets all the standards, and it's not something that needs to be hidden or, you know, pushed back in the woods, that these are, could be legitimate dwellings and that there is a safety protocol and a permitting path to allow these. So we don't see this as an avenue for proliferation, only an avenue for compliance. We did make a few amendments to the ordinance from the public draft that was circulated. The ordinance that is in your packet does include all of these changes. It also includes a redline version of some of the changes that were made from the time it was circulated during the July and August timeframe to the current ordinance that's proposed before you today. First off is the removal of an administrative development permit. That is a permitting process that is similar but a little more extensive than a building permit process. That was removed in order to reduce cost, but it also would still provide the same oversight and review opportunities for CDA departments to review, ensure health and safety compliance with all of the standards, so it's kind of one less regulatory burden. Originally, we did include the R1 Zone District as a potential option to allow RVs, but we did eliminate that based on some concern about RVs in more dense neighborhoods that tend to have smaller lot sizes. We did do some analysis and look at that there was only 87 parcels that were zoned R1 that met the three-acre minimum parcel size, and only 27 of those were developed with residences. So a fairly small amount, but wanted to remove that as an option just to focus on the more rural, larger areas that have larger parcels that have room to meet adequate setback and provide a little bit better screening and not to be so close to smaller lots in a, in a neighborhood. We did make a clarification that RVs must have dedicated access separate from the primary dwelling to hot, cold, water, kitchen, toilet, and lavatory facilities. It was just a little unclear in the original ordinance, and we add a prohibition of storage of combustible materials under the RV unit, which was a suggestion from the South County MAC. I did want to point out the memo that was dated today that was handed to you. It essentially just contains the comments that have been received since November 3rd and then a corrected recommended action in the staff report. The recommended action includes a reference to the administrative development permit, which was removed. So the recommended action, if we were to get to that point, is shown on the screen and in your memo, and I can put that back up at the appropriate time if necessary. I will note that we do have representatives from Code Compliance, Matt Kelly, as well as Environmental Health and Building, to answer any questions you may have as we go through the process. Thank you.
Let's go ahead and address questions then from commissioners. Let's start with Commissioner French.
One question on the inspections. Who, who will be doing those? And I assume it's two years after the initial approval?
Yeah, correct. So there'll be an inspection upon the initial approval, and that would be done by the appropriate department. If it's the electrical or the foundation, it would be the building department. If it's the defensible space, it would be the fire department. If it's the septic, it would be environmental health. And so it's just depending on the different components of the site which would require that inspection. And then the renewal process, it would just be a more straightforward inspection to ensure that nothing has changed, and if it has, then it would potentially require additional personnel out there to review the changes.
Okay. My main question is code enforcement. How caught up are you now with complaints and how many? Do you have any way of anticipating what this may generate along those lines?
Sure, I'm going to ask Matt Kelly to come up.
Chair Moeben, Commissioner French, Matt Kelly, Director of Code and Cannabis Compliance. We currently have 351 open code violation cases as of right now. My staff and I feel like we can handle the additional inspections, the two-year renewals for these. We don't, we anticipate that we have a number of, we currently have a number of code cases that involve RVs now, so hopefully those will, this is a pathway to permit those. Any new ones that come in, they would be treated like a manufactured home, so they would go through building for the initial setup, and then my staff would, I believe, renew those or look at that process every two years. We're still kind of determining that little part, but, so I feel like we would be able to handle that, that process and any new permits that come out.
How many people are in the code compliance department? I don't really have an understanding of that, Matt.
So Commissioner McAtire, we currently have, I have four code compliance officers, one supervising code compliance officer, I have three cannabis compliance officers, and one senior CDA, senior CDA permit technician.
So those who, Jess, how many are out in the field that would be doing this RV plus all the other specific, general code compliance? How many? Is that four?
So I currently have four.
Four. And you have 300 and some odd outstanding complaints of the three, of the four, for the four to handle?
We do. So each, each code officer, the county is divided up into areas, similar to how it's divided up into supervisor real districts. So each code officer is assigned an area, and they work that area in those code violation cases. Typically, code violation cases are inspected every three month, every 30 days, and so they're not inspected every single day, so there's adequate time to review all of those.
So what Brian noted was that the, there's sort of a potential amnesty for those that are out there currently. I'm sorry, Steve, to take this, but it, just since he's here, is that okay? Thanks. And so this amnesty idea of, of allowing people who are illegal to become legal. My question is, they want to become legal and they come in and they see the process and you've gone out to enview their property, and then all of a sudden they say, gee, I don't want to become legal, it's going to take too much. So now you, now you know that there's an illegal facility out there, and so what happens at that point?
So code compliance is complaint-driven. We are not proactive enforcement. The only proactive enforcement we do is for illicit cannabis grows, and that is very specific. So we would, you know, encourage the property owner to come into compliance, however, we would not proactively open a code violation case because that's not something that the board has asked us to do.
So let me get this. So they, they say we'd like to have our RV now legal, and you go out there and say, that's fine, but you can't, you've got water problems, you've got sewage problems, and so just to let you know, this is what it's going to cost and this is what you're going to do, and the person says, no, thank you, and then all of a sudden, you've seen all these violations and you just sort of then go home?
Well, we've not asked, been asked to be proactive, proactive enforcement.
Okay.
So we would, I mean, if a neighbor submitted a complaint for that RV, then we would take, we would open a code violation case, but otherwise, we would not proactively open.
Okay. Thank you very much. Commissioner French, back to you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's, in my view, so if you've got a 10-acre parcel, you got a RV tucked back in there, it's okay with the owner of the property and no neighbor is complaining, there's really nothing you can or will do, just like now, basically, because it's all complaint-driven.
It's all complaint-driven, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, I just have, I guess, just kind of like a logistical walkthrough of the way this would work. So a property owner would decide, hey, I'm going to make a space available to someone to, to park their RV and make it a, a permanent space. So they would come into the county, they would get the appropriate permit for that and any permits associated with that, like any environmental, septic upgrade, power, water, all that brought to that location with the driveway to it essentially, and then that site would essentially be permitted. And then the property owner would then lease that spot to, to someone else. So I guess my question is, is the, does the permit belong to the property owner and the land, or does it belong to the, to the app, to the person that's actually leasing the property?
The, Commissioner Foley, the, the permits would run with the land, so it's issued to the, the property, and we would, just like if you're building a garage, we would want to see a site plan. Where's the location of the structure? What is the infrastructure? What is the access? All that would be shown on the site plan. We would also want to, even though we're not inspecting the recreational vehicle itself, we'd want to know what it, what it was, what it looked like, to ensure that it had all the components that was required for the potable water, the kitchen, living areas, et cetera. So it'd just be like a site plan showing the structure, showing the locations, and then showing all the infrastructure, meeting the standards. That permit would be approved and issued, and then the actual on-ground development would be inspected to ensure that it meets the, the approved plans, and then that would be your approved permit for that structure, regardless of the leasing or the renting or who owns what.
Right, okay. So, okay, that makes sense. So there's going to be inspections through that whole permitting process. The two-year inspection, that's not to inspect the RV itself, but it's just to inspect to make sure that everything on the property is up to date and kosher?
Commissioner Foley, it would be to inspect the entire thing. If there were modifications to the structure that weren't in place with the original approval, then that would need to be addressed through the, the proper inspection through ANSI or the proper recreational vehicle mechanic or builder. So, yeah, you'd inspect the entire thing to ensure consistency with the code.
And then if, if a renter left and you got a new renter in there in that same spot, would that trigger a new two-year permit?
No, not necessarily. If the RV is the same and the people just live in the RV.
Well, if it's a different, if it's a different RV, if someone moves their RV that was parked there often, now a new one is coming on to the property.
Yeah, that would require that to be re-permitted and inspected to make sure it meets the tie-downs, all the hookup requirements, et cetera.
Okay. So there's permitting for the land and for the RV essentially?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I think that's all I have for now.
Commissioner McAtire?
Thank you. So why did you, there's so many questions from the letters that I read. Why every two years for a permit? A lot of people said, you know, do this annually. Some people said, do it once and that's it. Can you just give us a rationale behind the two years?
Yeah, Commissioner McAtire, I don't know that there's a magic reason for two years. RVs are not typically built for long-term habitation, so we wanted to make sure that it is still meeting the code requirements after a certain period of time. We allow every six months for the healthcare reasons, so it was just a number that was selected to ensure that the property is maintained. It's kind of a middle ground between an annual inspection or a lot can go wrong in five or seven years.
Okay.
Just to try to address some of the neighborhood concerns.
Great.
So that's kind of the reasoning.
And was there a rationale for the three acres?
Yeah, the three acres again was because the minimum parcel size identified by the general plan to accommodate septic and sewer is three acres, or septic and water, excuse me, septic in a well to meet all the setbacks, the repair area, and it is also kind of the minimum parcel size for residential agriculture and above, which are the zoning districts that were identified as potential options.
Okay, great. Now, let's go to the inspection, because it appears as if somebody from fire is going to go out there, code compliance, septic, I mean, environmental health, et cetera. Is, is that how you sort of see it? A person comes in, whether it's the lessor, the lessy comes in, and then you send out these various people to do this code, this, this check?
Yeah, it's similar to the building permit process. When somebody submits for a building permit, environmental health will go out and inspect the septic system, building will go out and inspect the foundation, fire will go out and inspect the driveway, and then we'll have code or building inspect the, the structure itself to make sure. So it's not all at the same time, it's kind of at different processes throughout the permitting procedure.
Okay. And then knowing that you're sort of a fee-driven operation, organization, could you, have you come up with a, a fee schedule relative to these RVs?
Not specifically, but we believe it'll be very similar to the Tiny Homes on Wheels fee structure that was developed as part of that ordinance, and that's approximately $2,000. Maybe $2,300, I believe, is the fee versus, can be $20,000 to $30,000 for a, a primary dwelling or a stick-belt dwelling.
Okay, thank you. All these are sort of clarification of, of what's before me here. What are, when you, it refers to site development standards. Are those written standards that are in, in California code, or in Nevada County code? Could you clarify for me what that means?
Yeah, so that's referring to the standards that are contained in the county code. So that's setbacks from property lines. It's also avoiding resource areas, so 100-foot setback from water courses, setbacks from oak trees, and if there is going to be encroachment into any of those resources, a management plan potentially would be required, just like any other development.
Okay. So a lot of people were concerned about when a, if, if and when, when a fire occurs, that all of a sudden we have these RVs on the roadway, and, so I'm, I'm, I think that's a very valid question. I'm sure fire would like to have a thought on that. So why have these wheels inflated?
Because they need to be registered with DMV and in good operational, it's just a little bit of, so they're not dilapidated, so that they're in good working order, that they're recreational vehicles and still operable. We don't have any requirements regarding if you can or cannot remove the vehicle during an evacuation. If someone wants to remove it, I guess they could. They would have to untie and unanchor everything that would be, you know, anchored down, but there's probably far more people that own recreational vehicles, boats, and other things that can be hauled that would be moved or not moved during a fire.
Well, I know from listening to stories from fire evacuees that one of the biggest problems happens to be, you know, somebody needs to get their boat out, and they're taking their boat and their, you know, and their wife is driving the RV, and all of a sudden, we have twice as many vehicles because everyone wants to save their vehicle. Okay, thank you. So let's deal with my other question, which is, I don't see the specifics relative to water. How does, how can water get to this RV? Okay, can it, can I hook up my garden hose from my house over to the RV?
No, it'd have to be an approved source, so either a legitimate NID hookup or a well hookup, so.
A dedicated NID source to them, so that they'd have their own meter?
I'd have to, I'm not sure how NID requires that for a second type of unit. for a second type of unit on a piece of property, whatever the legal way is from an NID perspective, then that would be what would be permitted.
Okay. And if it was a well, and the person already has a well, using their well to their home, then there'd be another dedicated line from that well to this RV, I understand?
Correct. I think it's, it's built in the ordinance, it has to be six gallons per minute if it's serving both the RV and the primary dwelling unit, or three gallons per minute if it's just serving the RV unit.
Okay. So, I don't see any of those, I mean, I see that, but I don't see anything about the, you know, the dedicated water that it has to be, I mean, I sort of interpreted that it could be a garden hose. Tyler?
It's on staff report page nine.
Yes?
There's a discussion about water-
Water supply.
Correct.
I don't see anything about NID, a dedicated water line from, like, NID.
So, I was just gonna say, in, under standard 12G, it talks about the RV shall be connected to existing permitted water supply in onsite sewage disposal system that serve the onsite single-family dwelling, subject to permitting and inspection by environmental health, or utility provider if connected to public water and sewer.
Thank you.
And it goes on from there.
Thanks for helping me read. I do read, I just don't get it sometimes. Moving on, let's talk then about electricity. Getting electricity to this, this RV. Can you, can you fill me in on that?
Sure. So, just like any other traditional dwelling, they are required to be connected to an electrical service. The ordinance requires a dedicated connection. Typically, it's a 30-amp system. And you can't specifically, you know, you can't tie together three or four extension cords and plug into your neighbor's garage. You have to have a dedicated thing, or a dedicated panel for this, which is inspected and permitted by environmental health, or, sorry, building. I'm rusty, I work in housing now. And then, it does allow for a connection to the county's off-grid, to the county's off-grid policy, which does mandate that you have a generator, but it prohibits the generator being a primary source of power. The off-grid policy requires that you have three days' worth of battery backup. And so the idea is, you know, the battery is continually recharged, and then in an emergency, if you need that generator, you're willing, you're okay to use it.
So, is this a separately metered connection? Can I, can I run a 30-amp off of the person's home and run it over towards my, that RV?
I would defer to building, but I think the idea is it's a standalone system-
A standalone system.
Dedicated to this unit.
Okay. Okay, now we're into sewage. So, we're going down. So, if I tie, according to this, if I tie into the person's existing sewage system, therefore, I can use, I could run a hose to their, I guess, to their clean-out, and put it in the clean-out, and, and have environmental health come and look to see that the septic system can, is able to hold more effluent? Is that, is that how it is?
I think it's a little bit more than tying a hose-
Okay.
-piping it into it, like, similar to traditional. But you'd have to demonstrate that your existing septic, both the tank and the leach fields have adequate capacity to accept the additional load created by that new unit. So, the example that we've used in public presentations before is if you have a three-bedroom house, but you designed your septic for a four-bedroom house, and you aren't using that, then you likely could use that potentially, you may need to add some leach field. If you don't have that capacity, then you're gonna have to either upgrade your septic tank and leach field, or create a new one, is the way the ordinance is raised.
So, many of the homes out in rural Nevada County were built in the '60s, '70s, '80s, '90s, and those plans and those specifications don't exist?
Correct. And so, you're able to get a septic designer to go out and do an analysis of the existing system to determine its holding capacity?
So that's what, that's what you would be requiring from, from the, to get a permit, would be, show me that somebody has gone out and checked your septic system to make sure that we can add another bedroom and kitchen in there?
I mean, I think in a nutshell, yeah, we don't want to speak for environmental health, there might be more to that, but that's the general premise.
That's the general practice. Okay, thank you. Number 14A, A4, sorry, 14, where am I? The Fire Protection Plan. 14A4 says, identify the project's emergency water supply or emergency water storage facilities. Can you explain what, what, what does an emergency water supply look like?
I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, that when you're building a new single-family home, currently, you're required to provide water storage onsite if you don't have adequate hydrants, and so that's what that is.
So, most of these, most of these three-acre out there don't have close hydrants. And so then you would, then you would be requiring, so let's just again say, we've got a home built in the '70s, and it's on a septic system, and it doesn't have a second water supply. It has a well, it's living off a well. And so you come out and say, well gee, if you want to put this RV on here, you're now gonna have to also purchase a holding tank. Is that correct?
That's correct. And I think you have to install the appropriate connections per the FIRE district specifications.
And you wouldn't say to the existing homeowner, says, you know, well, you also have to have a holding tank? No, it's, they're grandfathered in.
That, I would defer to FIRE, I don't know the answer to that.
Here, somebody from FIRE, he's standing up. Come on down, you're the next contestant.
Good afternoon, Eric Commissions. It, it does apply to the new construction, as in ADUs, that don't have the connection to a domesticated water system. So they will have a water tank on store based on the square footage of the new residence or dwelling going in. And it's based on NPA 1142, and it's a formula that calculates that, the square footage, the water flow, and everything like that. Does that answer your question?
Yes, and then my side question was, and so you come out and you see this, what they want to do with this RV, and you say you have to have a 500-gallon tank or something, correct? And is, so you have that 5, is it, is it connected to something? Is there, is there a pump associated with it? Or is it just sort of 500 gallons?
It's 500 gallons, and it's separate from the domesticated water system.
Okay. So I buy, I have to buy this 500-gallon tank. And then do you turn to the homeowner, and who's gonna put this on their property, and say, well gee, by the way, you don't, you need, because your home was built in the '70s, you need a thousand, thousand gallon?
No, they are grandfathered in, under the current building code of that year of that residence.
Thank you very much.
No worries.
Appreciate it. And not, I'll have more. Now, let's talk about defensible space for a minute, which is 14-7. Provide this fuels management plan. So we're gonna write a plan. Do we have to implement any of the plan?
Correct.
You do have to implement the plan? For defensible space, et cetera, et cetera?
Correct.
And, and what, and so, if you could teach me, what would be the defensible space, then, on a RV?
So my understanding, it'd be similar to any other residential dwelling, which is typically 100 feet, which is, you know, limbing up and clearing under storage. And then the maintenance plan is, how are you gonna maintain that over time?
So that would be another requirement placed on this RV to make it legal, is you also have to clear 100-feet perimeter around here?
Correct. And, and the part of the two-year inspection would be to ensure that that fuel modification area is maintained over time.
You have a chart on page 12 that I have no idea what it says. So, help me out.
So that's the permitting table?
Yes.
So we're adding recreational vehicle dwelling as an allowable land use. That's what the A stands for, under the RA column, and then not permitted in R1. So it's just an internal consistency that recognizes, if the ordinance was adopted, that that's how these would be permitted in the land use tables that are in each zoning district in the zoning code.
Okay. Just a few more questions, thank you. How many ti, we adopted this tiny homes, I don't know, eight months ago? Maybe a year, I don't know. How many have we had apply since, since we put this tiny homes in?
I believe five have applied.
Five, thank you. My next question is, could you, could you pull up the survey results there? I want to sort of summarize, I mean, you throw them out there for the public. I want to sort of see if I can summarize them. Is, is the public says, yes, we should be allowing RVs as housing, but then they say, if allowed as housing, should RVs, motor coaches, da-da-da, also be allowed for short-term rentals? And the people say, no. So yes, they'd like them, but no, they don't want them as short-term rentals. Then, then, then explain to me the 30-day requirement put, put in here, if you don't mind, right in the beginning of this ordinance.
Commissioner McAtter, the, similar to tiny homes on wheels, there's a prohibition from short-term rentals. And so, as a part of getting your certificate of use for this, to habitate an RV, you do a deed restriction, essentially, that states that I shall not rent this property for less than 30 days.
So, but, but you could be, you could be an Airbnb and saying, you know, you want to come in for, for a summer, summer to my RV, and I, you can rent it for three months?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you for those clarifying questions.
Commissioner Gerst?
Thank you. A lot of my questions have been answered already, but I've got some additional nitty-gritty ones. I was wondering if, at the two-year period, if a homeowner wants to extend their permit, are these $2,000 approximately fees reissued? Or is there a lower renewal fee?
It would be a lower, just kind of an inspection fee. We haven't come up with the fee schedule yet, but it's not quite apples-to-apples, but like our outdoor event ordinance, it has about a $1,600 fee, and then the renewal fee is less than half that. So we're probably trying to model something around a significantly lower fee.
Okay. Are there other additional impact fees that would be issued for this? Traffic mitigation, fire, school?
There's some recent provisions in state code that dwelling units under 750 feet in square feet and 500 square feet are not subject to many of those mitigation fees. So, these would fall under that exemption. I can't say if 100% of every single mitigation fee, but most likely, not all of them, if, if any. But the, we would treat them like we would a small, you know, ADU or something like that, as it pertains to mitigation fees.
Okay. For septic permitting, would an RV be considered a one-bedroom? Is there a number of beds that, I know that that's how septic are sized?
Yeah, my guess is if it's a two-bedroom RV, it'd be considered two bedrooms. Is that correct?
Yeah, we have a draft policy right now, but, it's just in draft stages.
Do you want to, Claire, can you speak to the mic on the record? Push the button.
Hello. Commissioners, just letting you know that we have a draft policy going, and it currently states that the RV would not be an extra bedroom.
I'm sorry, can you state your name and position?
Yes, it's Claire Chapel, and I'm with Environmental Health.
I have some more environmental health-
Sorry, could you repeat what you just said? Thank you.
So, the draft policy, again, it's, it's still in the works, but it suggests that the RV connection would not be an extra bedroom for the capacity.
Okay, so then, any existing system could theoretically support it?
As long as it's functional-
Okay.
-and there's a 100% repair area available.
Okay, great.
Time out, time out, sorry. What does functional mean? I mean, who determines that it's functional?
A qualified professional septic service provider would look at the tank, pump the tank, look at the leach lines, sometimes load the leach lines with water to make sure that they're functioning.
So, so you call Navvo and Sons, and Navvo goes out there, and they are required by the county to pump the tank and look at the leach field, et cetera, et cetera? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I, another question is, would you, would environmental health be willing to accept, say, a dedicated 1,000 or 1,500-gallon tank with a pumping contract? Is that something that was looked at?
I'm gonna let the environmental health answer those questions.
It's not currently in the draft, but mostly because it's not economically feasible. We did a survey of pumping costs from the local pumpers, and it's about $800 to pump a regular 1,000-gallon tank.
And then, also, let's see, I think that's all I have for environmental health. Thank you very much, Claire.
So, just for clarification, for, for this specific ordinance, an RV does not count as a bedroom for the existing septic system?
Again, currently, we have a draft policy, and in that draft policy, it's not being counted as a bedroom.
Is that the same policy for other ADUs?
No, for ADUs, we do count the number of bedrooms in the total capacity design. Or tiny homes on wheels, we count the bed, it has typically a one-bedroom.
And so what's the reason that this is different? I understa, I mean, it's great, it's a huge cost savings, but as, you know, people that are also building ADUs and tiny homes that are essentially the same, that we're basing this ordinance off of as kind of the same thing?
Yeah, it's a good question. I, I don't know, but that's currently what it states.
Sorry, my turn. So, again, this, this is kind of a big thing, in my opinion. So you have a septic system approved for a three-bedroom, two-bath house, and the repair area and the tank is sufficient for that. Now you're putting an RV with one or two bedrooms, whatever, and attaching it to that existing septic tank and leach field, and no further, nothing more needs to be done to that system? I think that's what you said, I just want to clarify.
Yeah, so if, if it's an existing system, and it's functional, and there's a 100% repair area available, should it fail? Right now, it's proposed to just allow it as a connection and not increase the capacity. Although, there's also another component to the draft right now, suggesting that the homeowner would record a covenant and agreement with the recorder's office, stating that they're aware of potential impacts from RV holding tank wastes, which sometimes have chemicals to keep odors down. Those chemicals can impact septic systems, they can impact groundwater. And so, there would be an agreement they would, would record, stating they're aware of that.
Interesting. Okay, thank you.
So, hold on, hold on, sorry. So, so, what, so I've got this RV on my, I want to put on my property. How's it going, what are you requiring it to quote "connect"? Does that mean I have to get a backhoe out there and dig, dig a dedicated line, and somehow it wise into this other existing?
Yeah, I believe in the plumbing code, there is a section that talks about, like, RV parks and how they're supposed to be plumbed. Many of them tie into, like, a clean-out from the existing sewer line. And so we would lean on the building department for that connection.
So, I'm still trying to understand, could I run a, a large hose from my RV to the clean-out? Or must it be a dedicated trench that I put fixed pipe in?
George, I think it would be fixed.
Sorry, I'm just trying to understand, get an idea of the costs here associated with, with doing this.
Hello, Commissioners, George Sherrod, building director here in Nevada County. Yes, the plumbing code would require hard, dedicated pipe to that existing septic system.
Which would be trenched?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, George.
I had one more for EH, sorry. There was language in the ordinance, the draft ordinance, that says, unless an alternative or temporary septic disposal method or water supply is otherwise approved- or temporary septic disposal method or water supply is otherwise approved, such as a gray-water system or waterless toilets. I know that environmental health has typically been a little wary of composting toilets and things like that. Under what circumstances would, do you imagine that environmental health would allow such systems?
I don't know exactly the answer. I could just tell you that the county code includes a waterless toilet section right now, and a gray-water section currently. There are certain fixtures that aren't supposed to be disposed of through the gray water. For example, like, the kitchen sink is not. So, we feel like that it couldn't be 100% gray water.
Okay. Thank you. The other questions that I had were, would an HOA or CCNR be allowed to exclude RVs as housing within their developments?
Commissioner Gersh, the county wouldn't enforce that, enforce CCNRs, so that would be a legal issue with the HOA, but even if there was a restriction in an HOA or CCNRs, the county would still issue an permit for allowing these.
For the DMV registration, I'm assuming that it would be appropriate for these to be the planned, not-in-use type of registration, which are very low fees? Is that what the county was imagining?
Yeah, I think just as long as, it depends on how they're going to be used. So, if it's non-operational, I guess that would be an allowed status with the DMV.
Okay. But these are not intended to be operational, correct? Hence, the skirting and the tie-ins?
Correct. And I don't know what DMV considers non-operational, in terms of if it's just not working, or if it's not planned to be moved, so whatever is acceptable would probably be accepted by the county.
Okay. And then, I had a question about the sites at 3,200 feet or above. There were two lines in there, about, one, a ramada being required over the RV, and the other being a maintenance agreement for shoveling of snow over an RV, which seemed a little redundant. Can you explain the thinking there?
Yeah, those were from our building recommendations, and I think it's just to ensure that the snow is removed, so that the RV and/or the ramada doesn't accumulate snow and collapse and create a safety hazard.
Okay. So, the maintenance agreement would be to remove snow of the ramada, not the RV? Okay. I think there's maybe a little clarifying language in there.
Okay, I see what you mean.
And then, for, can you explain the 10 days that are required the RV be unoccupied prior to the permit expiring?
Yeah, the intent is that if it's not renewed, or if it's unpermitted, then it needs to be vacated and not, you know, inhabited within 10 days of the permit expiring.
And that wouldn't apply if it was being renewed?
Correct.
Okay. I think that's all I had. Thank you.
I've got just a couple more. One of the big community topics that came up through all the public comment was the question of insurance. Obviously, that's on the forefront of everyone's mind here in Nevada County. I guess my question is, can an RV be insured under, as a rental, under a homeowner's policy?
I don't, we did have a recent meeting with realtors and some appraisers and some, I don't know if the insurance lenders were there. I think there's still uncertainty on exactly how they would be insured by that side. You know, as far as, like, assessment, they aren't assessed as real property, they're assessed as personal property, so I don't know if that would affect the insurance ability of it being in a unit. It could be insured like a vehicle would be insured, but I don't know that it would be a residential policy.
So, John, I happened to phone Mike Bratton on this same topic.
Okay.
State Farm, and Mike said, within the industry, they're not able to insure RVs used as homes because they don't recognize RVs as homes within the insurance industry.
And I guess, okay, I guess my follow-up question would be, did the county consult with the California Fair Plan or any other insurance providers that are still writing policies in this community as to whether or not this ordinance would potentially affect the overlay maps that they do to assess risk and potentially increase fire insurance more?
We did not have that specific conversation, no.
So, sorry to interject again, because I had that conversation with Mike, and, you know, this is one guy, I mean, there's a lot of realtors, insurance, but Mike's sort of the standard of this county. And Mike said, the most interesting thing was, if I own a home and I'm renting out part of my property to an RV, now all of a sudden, my home has gone from really a home to a business. Now, I'm in the business sector. And, and he said that insurance companies, that's their number-one way to get you out of getting insurance these days, is by, you know, they're looking for ways to kick you out of the system. And so, this is one of the ways to be able to say, oh, I'm operating my home, my business in my home by having this contractual relationship and receiving rent.
And I'm not even so much concerned as personal, that's upon the property owner to take that level of risk or not.
Right.
I'm more concerned of, you know, when these insurance companies create their risk assessments of areas and calculate how susceptible they are to fire, and that's what they're basing their premium rates on, can this in any way affect the overall community, not just the single property? That's a concern that I have.
I have, just wanted to add a comment. I think these would be covered under a vehicle insurance policy. My understanding with tiny homes on wheels is that's how they're insured, that they're considered a vehicle, and insurance is, say, $700 a year rather than a home insurance policy.
And there hasn't been any, no discussion with insurance providers about when that, when the tiny homes on wheels ordinance was passed?
Not that there was a discussion, but at the Board of Realtors, there was a couple insurance people there that said you could get a policy similar to how Commissioner Gersh outlined, and then Travis with Tiny Homes, Soul Learning Institute, indicated that some of his clients are getting insurance for the year for about $1,000 for the tiny homes. So, it seems to be similar.
Okay. I guess, just my last question would be, do we have any examples of other jurisdictions throughout the state where this has worked, where it's been implemented and worked positively?
Not that I found. We did borrow some of the habitability standards from the City of Oakland, has like a vehicle residential ordinance, which isn't specific to RVs as to vehicles, but otherwise, I didn't find any other ones.
I thought I knew what we were talking about when we first came in, but as the conversation has gone, it seems more and more to me like an RV as a vehicle than to convert to a home, that we haven't necessarily worked out exactly how that happens. So, I think the first hint of it is the screening versus the keeping your tires inflated? Like, is this a vehicle that's supposed to stay and be anchored, or is this a vehicle where the tires are supposed to be inflated? But I think more importantly, it comes out in what we were talking about with the utilities. So, if you have a, if you have a box, and then you're plugging it in, that's kind of what we're used to with a RV, if you go to an RV park, right? There's the, but then, what I heard about the sewer is now that's got to be hard-piped, except that if you're gonna, if you go to a RV park that has full hookups, you pull into the pad, the pad has a clean-out, and you take a hose, and you connect to that. Or water, there's a water line, and again, you're taking a hose, and you're hooking the hose bib up to the hose connection on the RV, but somebody said, no, it's going to need to be hard-piped. And I don't know how you hard-pipe an RV, and if you did, why would you inflate the tires? So, it feels like we're a little unsure of how this comes together, maybe on the building department side, or, correct me if I'm wrong here?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're definitely treading new ground here a little bit. I think, you know, from a land use perspective, we're trying to treat it as close to a regular building as possible. Insurance and those types of things are a different issue that aren't really related to just strictly land use. So, everything in the zoning code is geared toward land use, so that it needs to have the appropriate hookups, whatever that is, from environmental health, from NID, from whoever the service provider is, given the structure that it is. There may be some allowances, if it's an RV, that you have a spigot nearby that you hook the water supply to, maybe it needs to be hard-lined. I think some of it's going to be site-specific, given what type of RV it is, what type of camper it is, so I think some of it is going to need to be determined on a case-by-case basis, that's going to be permitted to the satisfaction of the sewer septic provider, the building department, electrical hookups, et cetera. So, those are all done at the building permit stage with, you know, the proper inspections, given the specific plans of how the vehicle may be wired itself, and I mean, wired not only electric, electrical, but plumbing-wise. That could affect how it's hooked up to the septic system, how it's hooked up to electrical, how it's hooked up to water. So, from a land use perspective, in the code, we are trying to treat it just as any other structure, as long as it has the inspected and approvable hookups, whatever those cases, whatever the site-specific cases dictate.
Okay. So, in terms of the way, what we're considering here, we're really talking about the land use piece of it, and then the rest of it potentially gets worked out as part of the building permit?
Right. I think they're important questions, and we want to make sure that there is a path to actually get them hooked up and approved, and in speaking with the other departments, you know, they're, they do feel confident that these can be permitted and meet inspections to pass electrical standards, sewer water standards, et cetera.
Okay, that makes sense to me. Thank you. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any other questions? We're running a little behind our schedule, but hopefully, our conversation has answered some of the comments or questions that maybe others have. Okay, I think, I think at this point, let's see, we're 10 to 3. You know what? Let's take a 10-minute break, and then we will come back and open this up for the public comment. So, see you guys back here at 3:50, no, 2:55. So see you guys back here at 3:50, no, 2:55. Get this show back on the road here. Thank you guys very much for the break. I know I appreciated it. So I think the best way to do this is, as we've done on popular meetings before, is to maybe have five or so folks lined up and then the rest of you kind of hold your seats so that we can not have just a mass of people, which it looks like you guys are doing a pretty darn good job, so we'll give this a try. When you come up front, you'll have, make sure to state your name and where you live and know that you'll have three minutes for your comments. Is the microphone on there?
Oh, there we go. Okay. Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Tom Durkin. I'm the director of the No Place To Go Project. Almost seven years ago, I proposed this idea and as--
Mr. Durkin, no, sorry to interrupt you. My understanding was that you had five minutes, so--
Thank you very much. I was going to ask you. First of all, I want to compliment you on the very intelligent questions you've asked. They are issues. But I'd like to change the merit of a little bit and talk about who the people are going to be served. There is a prevailing myth that hordes of homeless people are going to invest, invade the county. I've been doing this for 15 years. I don't see people moving. California, University of California, San Francisco did a California statewide study on people experiencing homelessness. Seventy-five percent don't move. And when they do move, it's usually for a job or to go home to family and friends. So I don't think we're going to have to worry about an invasion. But we are, we are trying to house local residents. Those are college students, unhoused youth, families, especially single parent families, low wage essential workers, aging and disabled people on fixed income, relatives and friends of property owners, and self-employed creatives. We're talking actors, writers, musicians, painters, weavers, architects, all the creative people that make this county such a special place to be. That's who we're trying to house. We are not trying to house street people with substance abuse problems or severe mental illness. We want to do a safe camp for them, and that's a topic for another discussion. The county will do some placements with their behavioral health and landlord liaison program, and we support that, but that's not what we're trying to do here. There's an assumption among the opposition that everybody who lives in a trailer and everybody who's unhoused homes is trash. I live in a trailer. I've lived there for seven years. I am not trash. I, the people I've interviewed over the years, there's decent, good people out there. That's the only housing that is available right now that's affordable to a lot of people. It's the way out of homelessness. Now, I don't, you know, I distinguish between unhoused people who are housing ready and chronically homeless people who are not housing ready should not be unhoused without supportive We heard a talk about insurance. Well, it's a decision everybody has to make personally based on their priorities and values. The risk, wildfires are a risk to everybody. And we already have people living in trailers. That's the main constituent that's going to be impacted by this ordinance, people who are already there. I evacuated. We don't take our homes with them. We leave, just like everybody else. It's too difficult to haul away an RV. And we don't want that to happen. We don't want RVs and tiny homes on the road during the fire evacuation. So we would actually like to put a amendment to say that, that if you sign an agreement, you're not going to evacuate during the fire, not going to move your stuff during evacuation. Quality of life is relative. If somebody in a house doesn't like a RV in the neighbor's property or even in the neighborhood, that impacts their quality of life. But let's talk about a single father with two children living in a minivan. Their quality of life and health and safety are greatly impacted by disorders. We should allow them to live in a home instead of on the streets in a car. I've done that. It's not a pleasant way to live, and it's not healthy, especially for children. Co-compliance is a problem, but that's not a reason to object to the ordinance. A lot of complaints say that the co-compliance doesn't enforce enough. Well, that's something to take up with co-compliance, but it's not a reason to deny people housing. Everybody in this county deserves housing. It's a human right. And like cannabis, Title 25 and Title 11, this regulation is so strict and so expensive, very few people are going to be able to comply. So I really like the idea of an amnesty for people who are already living. That's who's going to be affected the most. Whenever there's a complaint, they should have an opportunity to come into compliance. And we support the ordinance fully, but we have suggestions on how to make it a better ordinance. Amnesty is a good idea. Waiving fees and permits, paying for property improvements or paying for repairs to the RVs are also an incentive. And the reason the county would do that is every housing you bring online makes you more eligible for pro-housing designation. I talked to the state community development department and they said, yeah, if we authorize this housing, that will count towards pro-housing designation, which means we get more money for, for housing. And I'll argue a piece of paper here. So housing, housing for the people of other people is a human right and--
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Beth Moore. I'm a 43-year resident, parent, teacher, homeowner, and I own a business and a commercial property in Grass Valley. I want to thank the staff, Tyler and Brian, who have now seen at several of these, for their in-depth and inclusive and transparent and lengthy reports and addendums and fixes to try to develop housing solutions from a problem-solving perspective. And I really appreciate how inclusive this process has been. I've been to a few of these now. I'm currently a business owner, but I was a transition special ed teacher for 25 years. And one of the biggest things I did was supporting students in building independence. In particular, my last 12 years teaching at Nevada Joint Union High School District and at the high schools across the county, was helping our students with special needs develop all the resources they would need to live as independently as they could as adults singularly in that effort, as the most difficult thing was finding legal, safe, affordable homes for them, especially when they might need to have supported employment or need significant aids for hygiene and mobility and all that sort of thing. Some of them were able to be independent on their homes, on their family's homes by living in casitas, small trailers, that kind of thing, because it's a fine line between having them be close enough where they can still get family and agency support and yet have a feeling of independence and autonomy. But they're not the only ones who need that. We have aging parents. Nevada County is the oldest per capita county of 58 California counties. And we have approximately 10%, we have more than 10% of people with access and disability and other challenges. But that's a, that's a typical standard is about 10% of our population has disability or access challenges. And so having aging parents be able to stay in home with caregiver support or caregiver support for their children, but for aging people to stay as independent as they can as long as they can, and even having caregivers be able to stay in a, an alternative dwelling, which can include RVs. Also for traveling nurses, we see a lot of traveling nurses at our business coming through. They're often here for four or five months, and they sometimes have a very difficult time finding good standard living where they can be for just a few months and then go back to wherever they came from. I love the goals of this particular effort to solve our housing crisis with looking at reduced development costs, increase housing supply, and having flexible--
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Janet Banner. I live east of Banner Mountain on Red Dog Road, and I am concerned about my safety and my husband's safety because our home is surrounded, our neighborhood is surrounded by illegal encampments of RV, RV trailers, RV campers. But that's, that's not what I'm going to talk about here. I just want you to know this is why I'm invested in this decision that the county is making. And I understand the dilemma that California faces with unhoused and underhoused residents. And I appreciate Nevada County's effort to expand affordable housing options. But the current, the current draft ordinance raises significant safety, infrastructure, and community stewardship concerns. I think instead of this ordinance to legalize distributed RV housing in locations many miles from necessary services, like in my neighborhood, the county should provide centralized RV housing locations within town limits like Grass Valley or Truckee, which would allow residents to access employment, medical and mental health services, public transit, and just shopping, like going to Safeway. Centralized RV locations could be built with full hookups, sewer, water, electricity, thereby eliminating many of the hazards of distributed RV housing located in our very high fire risk forested properties. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maureen Graber, District One. I appreciate you bringing up the whole homeowner's insurance issue. A couple of months ago, I called Department of Insurance and asked them if we have such a model, what would be the impact on wildfire insurance for us? And I was told, since this model does not yet exist, they were not willing to engage in that conversation. But I think it's a very important conversation. Local governments are under significant pressure and scrutiny to comply with state-mandated affordable housing requirements. Nevada County is ahead of the curve, as demonstrated by its recent pro-housing designation by California Department of Housing and Community Development. This has the potential to position Nevada County for additional housing funding, a very good thing. But striving to receive funding or avoid penalties or to avoid development costs should not be the sole consideration when seeking affordable housing options. Impacts must be thoughtfully considered. Simply checking a box to influence housing data on a state report is not a very good thing. County leadership is well aware of its very high wildfire risk rating. It is county leadership's responsibility to mitigate this risk to protect its citizens. As a community member very interested in the causes and impact of wildfire, I have heard from fire officials over and over again, people start fires. Human ignorance, carelessness, and/or negligence starts fires. Adding more people into a very high wildfire risk area without addressing infrastructure deficits increases risk. Adding more people into unincorporated areas already identified by the county's own evacuation plan as having insufficient evacuation routes increases risk. Adding people into densely forested, unincorporated areas without fire hydrants increases risk. Adding people into densely forested, very high wildfire risk areas without sufficient evacuation routes or fire hydrants in RVs lending to a quasi-camping lifestyle increases risk. Increasing wildfire risk elevates the likelihood of loss of life, property, and local economic stability. As a governing body, you are tasked with understanding the risk-benefit analysis of this draft ordinance. Please take the time necessary to vet options, alternatives, and mitigation strategies to ensure you are not creating a very significant new risk for our county and its citizens, regardless of whether those citizens reside in traditional homes, tiny homes, or potentially RVs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, staff. My name is Catherine Doolittle. I live in Nevada City, and I served as the outreach director for Nevada County Home Paths, starting in 2021, where we and our team presented a plan written by experts in the field of homelessness to community groups and churches in our county. This blueprint was for a safe camping area and safe parking area for RVs and campers in a central location close to all the services, and also for those who live in cars, along with the navigation center, which had not been realized at that time. Of the groups to whom we presented, we received 90% positive support. As a board member of United Way, a homeowner, and an active community member, I appreciate your leadership and the hardworking county staff, again, for your serious consideration of both the real-life experiences shared here today of living in fear of being forced from your home, and equally for your efforts identifying the concerns outlined by property owners that can be thoughtfully addressed through planning. I ask that the permit requirement and the path to compliance be developed with a strong goal of affordability, as well as to ensure that rentals are reserved for locals who need housing and not for vacation rentals of any length. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Robyn Nichols. I'm District One. Thank you, commissioners. I have a few questions. My understanding is that the purpose of this ordinance is fourfold. First, to provide much-needed, affordable housing in our county. Secondly, for the county to establish health, safety, and zoning standards for residential RVs. Third, as a vehicle for the county to inspect RVs currently being used as residences to bring them into health, safety, compliance. And finally, for those who are currently using RVs as residences to come into compliance. I have a few concerns. I'm not understanding why RVs aren't being held to the same standards of ADUs in terms of setbacks, power supply, septic, and water supply. I know that a lot of people are concerned about seeing RVs in their neighborhood, and they're concerned about the site-related issues, but honestly, there are RVs parked throughout all neighborhoods, even in million, billion-dollar neighborhoods. all neighborhoods, even in million-dollar neighborhoods. My understanding is that ADUs may share the power, water, and sewer septic supplies of a primary residence, so it would make sense that RV installations would be able to follow the same requirements. And again, I would suggest following the requirements of an RV park. Everything is hard-wired and hard-plumbed to the connection, and it's on a gravel or a pavement base, as is required in the... But then, from the connection to the RV, it would be just as if you were in an RV park. Septic capacity should be sized to meet the added load of an RV, and the occupancy in the RV should reflect the septic capacity. My understanding is that the current code is set to up to two occupants per bedroom. If environmental health requires 100% repair area within ADU, there should be the same standard for RVs, without requiring... I mean, you could have five people in an RV, and it could overload the system, and I think that would be an environmental health issue. Regarding Mike Bratton's concern about properties being designed as businesses, renting an RV is no more or less a business than renting an ADU, so that didn't quite make sense to me. If a Ramada is built, it should be built to handle the snow load, so shoveling snow should not be required. Centralized RVs are a good idea, but they would still be rentals and would not provide a legal way for homeowners to house family members or provide additional housing. RVs should be allowed as a primary residence with the requirement of all infrastructure needed to be in place. A lot of people can afford to develop a piece of property, but they can't afford to build. Allowing them to put an RV, as long as they follow all the developmental standards and requirements, would give people a path to homeownership as opposed to renting in a mobile home park where maybe they're paying $1,000 a month, or an RV park, the one across from the fairgrounds, is $100 a night. And so, this is not meeting our affordable housing initiative or intentions. I would also like to see that you allow one RV per every three acres, again with the requirement that septic water, electricity, and egress be in place for each.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Mark Triolo, live in Nevada City. I'd like to address my comments toward the permitting process, and specifically to respectfully ask you to consider the total costs of the permits and the upgrades that would be required per the conversations we've had here today. By the time you consider electrical, plumbing, sewer, and the permit itself, plus, it sounds like numerous other possible upgrades that would be required, you're quickly approaching $10,000 or even more. I mean, a very, very significant expense. And it may be possible that people that are looking to use these kinds of dwellings may not have the financial wherewithal to bear that burden. So personally, I'm feeling as though there is a very high probability that most of these units will go unpermitted, and then we'll have the safety issues and other issues that have been raised today as a follow-on to that. So I'd ask you to please consider that in your decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Eldon, District One, up on Banner Mountain at 3626 elevation during the snow mageddon. We had six feet of snow on the ground. I commend everyone for the Tiny Homes project. I'm a little dismayed that there's only been five in the months that it's been activated. However, I do understand the responsible homeowners and landowners want to play by the rules, and unfortunately, in allowing RVs to be used as primary homes for individuals, I know for a fact in our area, there have been numerous code enforcement requests put in, and we have seen no resolution. We are in the process with our Neighborhood Watch organization to have additional meetings because of irresponsible property owners within our area that allow more than one, more than two, possibly upwards of 60 or more illegal units allowing people to live without electricity, without water, and definitely without sewer in our area. There have been several instances of felons being arrested in our area, illegal fireworks that started fires July 4th evening, other fires that have been started by people living on the edge, but by known property owners that are allowing this. I'm actually okay with the recommendations, but there needs to be additional code enforcement that can actually do something when the community points this stuff out. Thank you very much. I think there's a lot going on that's not understood, and I just want to be on record that it's occurring. It's not our average homeowner and landowner. It's others.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you for your time. My name's Ariel Blake. I live in Nevada City. When I come here, both as a representative for the SAFE program at Bright Futures for Youth, which attempts to provide services and housing for the youth in our community, and also a parent of two school-aged children here. So trailers are not an ideal situation for anyone, but without any substantial improvements in affordable housing in our community, I mean, it's a pretty necessary short-term solution. And I think a lot of people have spoken to a lot of things, but the homeless youth situation in our community is pretty serious and often unseen and overlooked, because they're not as visible as some of our other homeless. But currently, our agency has 93 active clients, 60% of which are actively homeless. And, you know, these are our sons and daughters coming into adulthood without affordable places to live. These are good kids, oftentimes employed, and I don't know if anyone's been paying attention to how rents have just skyrocketed in our county in the past, you know, four or five years, but there is something that's not working for our kids as they come into adulthood. And anything that provides a meaningful option that creates a little bit of stability, a little bit of care for them to come into this new stage of life, these are really important things to work on as a community. And so, I'm here to recommend relaxing of the three-acre limit. That provides much more options, especially closer to town, closer to services, jobs for people who are actually in need, and anything that creates less barriers. Certainly, the cost of these permits, reducing those, just trying to create as much access as possible, should be really important here. We want to create affordable housing. We don't want more, you know, $1,200 studio apartments that people with a full-time job can't afford. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Charlie Price, live on Zion Street in Nevada City. And I want to address some of the issues here. Your clock started before I did. Hope I can squeeze this in now. You be told RVs aren't meant for full-time living, yet retired folks do it all the time. They sell their homes, move into an RV. They'll tell you, full-time RVing is fine. They're happy living in an RV, rolling from state to state. Ask them, they'll tell you, full-time RVing's great. You be told RVs lower home values, they're unsightly. Drive around, you see them everywhere. It's not the RV folks are worried about, it's who be living in them. Drug-addicted alcoholics got them scared. Nobody wants a hobo living right next to them, near their house, on their land, who they rent to. My clock's got me bothered. Think about who they'd rent to, to be near their house, on their land. Retired folks, kids in college, the working poor, might be their own adult son just starting out, or their elderly parents they want near their door. Now, some folks want this county to be their own HOA, and they want CC and ARs to expand. This isn't just low-income housing, it's property rights, so an owner could have more control over their land. Thanks, you guys. I've got an RV, and actually, I let a waitress that was living in her car stay in it for a little while. Now I realize it was illegal. And I can tell you that moving an RV out during a fire isn't that hard when it's not hooked up. But hooking up an RV, the way you're talking about, nobody would spend the time getting it road-ready in the need of an evacuation. So the reality is, your ordinance will keep RVs off of the road during an evacuation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thanks for your time. My name is Liz Flores-Lathan. I'm a local Realtor and homeowner. My home is actually zoned RA-3, so I'm one of the homes that would qualify to have an RV legally for rent on it. I just want to say that I appreciate that all of these, like, safety standards and defensible space and all these concerns have been addressed in the ordinance. I think that documentation and knowledge of what's going on, it creates a path for follow-up and compliance and better safety standards. One concern I do have is affordability for compliance. If it's not affordable, it's not going to address the concerns of anybody who opposes this ordinance. So I know there's a lot of people in the nonprofit sector here, and hopefully, we can all put our heads together and figure out a way to let people do this legally, because we don't want to create extra hazards or make our community members and our neighbors unhappy. I do feel that our RA-3 is great for use like this. My neighbors have horses, sheep, chickens, a woodshop, all these uses, and we don't really get in each other's way, and we are far enough away from each other where we're not even able to see what's going on on our next-door neighbor's properties. So I think that the three-acre lot size is perfect for something like this. And I just want to comment that a lot of us, we are only a couple missed mortgage payments away from needing an alternative housing situation. Things are getting a lot more expensive. I have a friend who had to live in an RV for about a year till she got on her feet with her kids, and we really need options like this for people, safe housing options, giving them extra time, extending some flexibility, because we don't want our community members to feel fearful, have to move to another state. We want our amazing people to stay here. But we're going through some large economic shifts, and we need creative solutions. I think that this is a creative solution. I don't see it being overused, but hopefully, we can make it more affordable. I think we can have a synergistic effect when people feel housed and safe, but we do need to have a balance, and we need to respect everybody's concerns and find an affordable way to make this legal. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Joan Ramsey. I'm a mental health professional, living and working in Nevada County since 1985. And I'm very concerned about the lack of affordable housing that has driven young and low-income working people and disabled people into living illegally in recreational vehicles. Many people are currently living under the threat of being discovered and forced out with nowhere else to go. Many of these existing situations include children. I'm concerned about the mental health consequences of the anxiety created by never knowing if you're about to be forced out of your home, and the huge stress when it finally happens. People can be forced into the woods, which is far more dangerous for them and with the community. I'm in favor of this ordinance to allow recreational vehicles to become legitimate homes. I would prefer that the ordinance allow pre-existing inhabited wheel homes to be brought into alignment with a health and safety conditions that has flexibility for unique circumstances. Some might meet all requirements to ensure health and safety and neighbor concerns, but not exactly meet the letter of the ordinance as written. For example, an already-existing situation that is safe and not bothering anyone, but is located on a 2.5-acre lot. I believe this three-acre lot size limit is too restrictive. I would like for the ordinance to allow, for common sense and compassion, with enforcement aimed at supporting bringing existing living situations into safe conditions acceptable to immediate neighbors as opposed to eviction. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Joanne Rebain. I live in District One. So far, the county has not demonstrated any capacity to enforce anything. That's a big problem. I believe it's premature to entertain permitting people to live permanently in an RV. Recent attempts by the county to increase the affordable, low-cost, low-income housing supply have not generated evidence of acceptance. According to Brian Foss, County Planning Director, in two years, only two ADUs have been permitted, and no pre-approved ADU plans have been used. Only four tiny homes on wheels have been permitted, and only six Title 25 dwellings have made use of the lesser building codes. Clearly, Nevada County property owners have no appetite for utilizing the tools like this proposed ordinance. We must give ourselves time to realize the benefits of what's here and what's coming. A split-level use psychiatric care facility is coming here. The county has grant funding available to repair and replace manufactured... and replace manufactured mobile homes. New housing developments have a new financing tool for infrastructure build-outs. And Veterans Department here helps vets find housing. Hospitality House, Project Heart, and the Two Women's Shelters help with housing. The RV dwelling draft seems reasonable until you study it closely. The cost of compliance could easily exceed $25,000 or more, which will not incentivize anyone to undertake all the required steps to comply with these rules. If the measure is passed as it is, without major changes and penalties and enforcement provisions spelled out, it will continue and encourage continued SCAFLR RVs and continuation of the well-known safety, health, fire safety issues and dangers well-known to everyone in this county. Everyone has seen an RV wreck on the freeway. You know that the walls and the roof are paper-thin and that the construction barely holds together. Trailers and RVs are not meant to be permanent residences. I've lived in one while my house was under construction. It's hard. It's not easy. So, I hope that you will read the stuff I prepared for you earlier, and I urge you to oppose this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jackie Mazan. I'm a long-term resident up on top of Banner Mountain at 3,800 feet. I've lived there my whole life, practically built my house in '81, started in '77. Nobody up there, except one person in a trailer down the road who was going to eventually build their house. And one winter, it was so bad, we had no power forever, and no plows. No plows went that far. So, I hiked it down to their trailer to see how they were doing, a mother and three kids. The dad was always away on business. I don't know what he did, but he was always gone for months at a time. And I was horrified during this power outage to find a knock on the door. They were huddled in this little trailer with the burners on for the stove, for heat. And this happened all the time. We had blackouts constantly up there in the winter. But anyway, that's just a horrible memory of somebody living in a trailer. And I feel sorry for anybody that's now living in trailers up there illegally, living in these conditions. I really feel sorry for them, and I wish that there was an alternative other than this that we're proposing. What are the consequences? That's what I want to know. What are the consequences for people that do not permit? And end up causing havoc? Because we've had havoc up in our neighborhood. Fires, trash, break-ins, dogs, biting pets, all kinds of crap. Loose chickens, loose goats, I don't know. It's been so strange. It was never like this. It's really bad up there. What are the consequences if they don't permit? If they, if, I don't know. What are the consequences? Nobody ever talks about that. Do they just give them an extension? Or, "You poor thing, we'll just extend you another two years." You know? It's not acceptable. Also, now, I have a new concern. Environmental Health said that when they dump their chemicals into the septic system, it's going to leach into the ground, poison my water. I don't want that. I'm really worried about that now. Thanks a lot. That's another concern on my list of 50 concerns I have for my safety, fire safety. Fires. We've had fires up there on Banner. Nobody knows who starts them, but we know who starts them. Anyway, those are my concerns. I appreciate your listening, and I hope that you consider these things in your decision.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm James Beal. I live in your South District. I currently see within five miles of my place, RVs are already there, most of them already vacant, and just sitting there on the property. And the whole thing in the South District, I've already gone through two fires, the Dog Bar Fire and the River Fire. Both of them are pretty scary. I mean, you see planes. And it's just, like I said, having animals, having family, worrying about my house. Also, the other is, I, sorry, I'm getting really emotional about this, because I'm more worried about my insurance going up, because then bringing stuff in that, why? I have a neighbor right now. He ends up bringing stuff on the property. I've already had to fight with my insurance company, saying that it's not my stuff. It's actually my neighbor's stuff. And, I mean, it's just more and more. And I'm always going, when he shows up, I have to go out. I'm wondering what else is coming on the property. What is my insurance company going to do for me? Nothing, except cancel me. The other, it's code enforcement. I'm dealing with code enforcement with this person right now. And they're taking, they don't push the issue. They end up saying, "It's a slow process." I've been dealing with a grading permit for three years now, and nothing's been done. The only thing I get is, "It takes time. We can only do so much." I mean, it's just, I worry about my property value going down because of other stuff being brought on. I mean, having vacant RVs within, right next door to you, right on the property line? Like I said, it just infuriates me. I mean, I'm for it, but also be respectful. You just need to be respectful of your other property owners with you. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Ralph Silverstein from the CEA Foundation. That's Community Environmental Advocates Foundation. I think this gentleman before me here raised a question.
So, I believe as representative of that organization, you get five minutes?
Oh, thank you. I'll hopefully only be a minute.
Okay.
Appreciate it, though. There's a lot of fear and concern about, you know, the impact of this. But then, on the other hand, he and other people are pointing out that we have a problem already, in the sense that we have so many people in the woods, living in, you know, in trailers and such, because that's all they can manage, or abandoning trailers. And so, I kind of view like, it's good to have a regulatory standard, at least, you can go out the door with and say, "Well, you're too close to the property line. You need to move, you know, plan to put it in the right spot, do these few things, and it'll be better." And I think the county has done a good job of going through and looking at the needs in order to make this to where it will be minimally disruptive and will comply with the existing code. So, in general, CEA Foundation supports this ordinance. We do have some concerns, and a lot of them have been voiced. I think they all kind of come under the general heading of, like, aesthetics. So, there may be appropriate need for screening in cases where it's visible from the road or something like that. Or setbacks that are sufficient to satisfy that. And then, other than that, I think that, given the issues with code enforcement and the fact that this will be an additional response about it, it seems like it should be planned to have staff dedicated to this task, you know, to enforce it. But also, I think there's going to be a very narrow, there's a real narrow window of people who can utilize this, just like with the ADUs, it's people with existing houses. They want to spend the money, do it right, get the code and so forth. And that'll be a lot better than just going and plopping another trailer down in their backyard and renting it out. So, that's my thoughts. Thank you very much.
My name is Matthew Zapowski. I live in Nevada City Downtown. I am a lifelong local resident here. Moved here when I was two, so not quite lifelong, but close. Currently, a certified financial planner. Before that, I was a bartender and a server at various restaurants in the county for about 20 years, father of an 18-year-old son. What has struck me most about this conversation we've been having is the extent to which everybody in this room seems to genuinely want the same thing, which is for our community to be safe, for the people in it to be safe and to be okay. None of us want an invasion of people coming here, burning things down, throwing their trash everywhere. None of us are here for that. What I'm so, so, so tired of is watching the people I care about get priced out of this community. It's been happening for decades. I've had to say goodbye to so many friends who just cannot afford rent here. You know, I was working the good jobs in the bars and restaurants, the people who were in the kitchens, the people who were bussing the tables. All of them, for the most part, had some sort of alternative housing solution. You cannot make the minimum rent in this county on minimum wage right now. It is not happening. And I don't think that those of you, you know, none of you up there have any higher responsibility than solving that problem. And there is never going to be a perfect solution that crosses your desk. There's always going to be problems. Working out the technical details is, you know, nothing but respect for the work of the county, all of you on the board, all of you on the commission. You know, you're all trying to find these solutions, and I really respect that. It's never going to be perfect, and it's not enough to say, "Well, once we have a perfect solution," or "Once we see how everything else plays out," or "We need to be patient, or we're trying to do so many things already." Something needs to happen, and this is something that's going to help some people. And the people out of all of the hundreds and hundreds of RVs that are inhabited in this county, the narrow slice that are actually going to apply for these permits are going to be the people who want to follow the rules, who are actually committed to doing this right. And that is exactly what we should, all of us in this room, that's what we should be trying to support. These are not the ones who are going to be throwing their trash everywhere. These are not the ones who are going to be burning their RV down. But if these borderline people who are struggling to find housing right now actually fall through the cracks, a few of them might conveniently move away and be somebody else's problem on the streets. But most of them are going to end up in the woods here, end up in the streets here, end up in the corner of the parking lots of the grocery stores here. They're going to get addicted to drugs. They're going to start doing crime. They're going to fall through the cracks. They're going to die. And those are the people that we are trying to save, and that is what makes this community safe. The problems that people are afraid of are the problems that they're going to create if they don't work collaboratively.
Hi, and thank you for all the work you've done. My name is Leilani Vevang, and I live in, uh... How are you? Whoa, okay. So, I want to say thank you, and I want to say thank you to everyone in the Building Department and Plan Department. And this is, I think, my third meeting. Anyway, to get to the point, we have a very kind-hearted community. And all of us want to have everyone have a home, you know, a Christmas tree, a puppy, you know? We want it all for everybody. But some of these things, we try really hard. I think that this one isn't quite cutting it. For a couple of things, it became obvious today, which was, number one, code compliance. I know, nobody wants to be a bad guy, but they're just, it's not happening. I mean, if there's no penalty, then what's your incentive to follow the code or do what you're supposed to do? So, I think it's pretty obvious that our code compliance is not going to be able to handle this. Then, the septic issue. It was all going along pretty well for a while, until I realized, wait a second. You're saying if someone's got a three-bedroom home and their septic is compliant, and they hook up an RV, the RV people, what? They don't go to the bathroom? I mean, come on. You have to include what their refuge is into the system, too. So, I think Environmental Health has to look at that again and say, "You're adding people to the system? We want the system to work? Let's look at that." And then, the last thing is, and this is where you're going to burn me at the stake. You know what? It's expensive to live in Nevada County. We can't all live where we want to. I know, that doesn't sound nice. Nobody likes it. I mean, a part of me would like to live in Pebble Beach, but hey, instead, I have to scrape my way and live on my land in Penn Valley, which I love, and really, I prefer it. But what I'm saying is, I work in a lot of counties, and I've seen the influx of people taking advantage of new programs that are available. And I say that this looks like an open door. I mean, people say they don't want to think that people are going to come here, but I think it is true that they might. So, I'm saying, you know what? When you're young, sometimes you have to, like, rent a building. You have to live in a small house. You may have to, like, move to Fresno or somewhere in Bakersfield that you don't like. But then, when you can afford it, you can move to a place that you like. I mean, I'm old. I'm working, so I can live in a place I like. Anyway, thank you very much.
Hello. Thank you for having this meeting, and I appreciated a lot of the questions, because they brought up things that I read through some of the stuff online, a lot of things I hadn't thought about. So, I appreciate a lot of the things you brought up. I think this ordinance...
Could you tell us your name and...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Karen Kroger. I'm a retired financial planner.
Thank you.
And I live in Nevada City, and I've lived in the county since 1980. I've watched this community grow a lot. This ordinance is a good start. I think it has a lot of parts to be worked on. The insurance thing that was brought up, you know, fire mitigation, all those other things. I think three acres is too big. I think you should, once you get it all ironed out, someone who has an acre, but should be able to have a motorhome and that their uncle, or their niece, or their daughter live in it until they can get on their feet. This isn't going to be rented, this RV that I put on my property, I'm not going to rent it to some homeless person that's going to be doing meth or having parties. They're going to be on my property. I'm going to care who lives there. We need more affordable housing. The housing costs here are horrendous, and most of us don't want to move to Fresno. So, I think we need to find some better alternatives, and I'm glad that you guys are at least addressing this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Karen.
Hello. My name's Dave Holman. I've been a resident of Nevada County for 45 years. I have 10 acres in Penn Valley. I've lived on my property for 23 years now. My son has been there for 22 years. Another friend, 14 years. I have one other person. Newcomer's been there for four years. All old friends of mine. We would be homeless if we just didn't have our RVs to live in. The way the ordinance is written up right now, it would be impossible for us to afford to do all the hookups and permits. I was turning into the county a little over a year ago, so I don't know why. I guess there's a moratorium on removing people from their RVs right now, and that's why I'm still there. But even if this ordinance is passed, as a few other people have mentioned, the costs are prohibitive. And as it is, it looks like two elderly people and two senior citizens are going to be homeless. Please do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Joseph Lasoney. I'm a resident of Nevada County. I live at 1606 Mulberry Drive in the Olympia Glade Mobile Home Park in Grass Valley. My purpose here today is to voice my objection to the RV ordinance that is currently constituted. My attention was drawn to this only recently by a very powerful and very well-reasoned editorial that was published in the Nevada Union. The editorial sets forth many reasons as to why this ordinance should not be approved in its present state. I forwarded and mailed a copy of that editorial to each of your offices. I don't know if you received it. I'm sorry to send it such late notice. I have been a consumer protection... I have been a consumer protection attorney and environmental attorney for more than forty years in California. It is my considered opinion, after reading that editorial and all the reasons set forth there, and in verifying their accuracy, that this ordinance, its present state, constitute a clear and present danger to the safety of every resident and every wildlife animal in the county that we currently reside in. It does not adequately address many issues, in my mind, most importantly, the risk associated with wildfires. In my career, I had the privilege of being a presidential advisor to two presidents, Jimmy Carter and Ronald Reagan. Jimmy Carter, as you probably know, was the author of FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Ronald Reagan, after he took over from Jimmy Carter, did wonders in making sure that that agency, stated existence, was well-funded, was able to do his job. I'm here to urge you, strenuously urge you, to vote no on this RV ordinance. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Hi. Can you hear me? My name's Ursula Donofrio, I'm from District One. So when passing the tiny homes ordinance just in January, the county specified it did not include IVs because, to quote the county, "This distinction ensures that housing options meet safety and durability standards." So I guess I'm confused of what changed since January. RVs are still a fire risk due to lower safety standards. They don't protect occupants from temperature extremes or outside contaminants like smoke because they lack the insulation and seals of an actual residential unit. RVs are not equipped for long-term waste disposal, so connections to a sewage system are critical, yet exceptions will be allowed. And it's these exceptions that will contribute to contaminated soils, creeks, rivers, and wells. My only source of water is a well, and I'm wondering if I have the right to clean drinking water? And just this summer, we had E. coli warnings posted on Lower Deer Creek in downtown Nevada City. I mean, this is an issue. If this ordinance passes, a few may spend the time and money on permits, but most won't, as we've heard, they know the county won't bother them. And I think we will have an influx of RVs filling our hillsides, because essentially, you would be normalizing camping as our affordable housing solution. You are increasing density, because buying a tent camper on Craigslist for five hundred dollars is cheap and easy, so you will have more residents. And I'm just wondering how will insurers and the fair plan view this change in land use? I mean, to me, the biggest issue is fire insurance, because if it goes up even more than it already is, you completely exacerbate housing affordability in this county. I know you can insure an RV and its contents, but the question that I've asked numerous insurance agents is, if a fire is created by RV tenants cooking outside under a tree canopy and the primary house burns, will their insurance cover their property and their home? If it spreads to an adjoining property, will their insurer cover their loss? Or will they say, sue your neighbor, they're the ones who are renting?
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Don Harris, I'm with the No Place To Go Project and also the Nevada County Arts Council. This is a very thorough proposal, and it needs to be even more thorough as we see from the kinds of questions that are asked. You know, the professionals that were involved in giving us a presentation earlier, I have a lot of faith in them, the ordinance is written in a very complex way, there's a lot of complex issues here. I think the woman who just spoke before me in asking the insurance questions, we have to fight this fight on a number of fronts. First of all, if the neighbor is suing the neighbor, they're going to end up going to Cal Fair Plan anyway, we're all going to be suing through them, that's because they're the only ones that'll insure us. I'm a veteran, and I could not get insurance on my property, even from the Veterans Insurance Association. And they will serve veterans to do anything, but not here. The minute I said my zip code, they ace me out. You know, the situation that we are going to be faced with if this does go through, is that every issue, every detail is not going to be nailed down. I liked what I heard earlier from you guys about, you know, maybe, oh, we see this here and there. Flexibility is not a bad thing when we're dealing with professionals. They're going to make the right decisions when they get there, they have the same stake in this county that we do. So I think that's important. For forty years, I've seen this homeless problem. I worked in an emergency room in nineteen eighty-two, when we first saw the homeless veterans on the streets. And that was tough to see. And here we are forty years later, making only minimal progress, if any, and we haven't really come up with any new solutions. This is a creative solution that is in the hands of the private sector. We talk about not wanting the public, the government, to handle everything that we're doing? We're turning this over to the property owners. I own a three-acre piece of property. We're turning this, this ordinance turns it over to the property owners and allows them to make a decision about what they want on their property, how to manage it, how to work with their neighbors. This is bringing all of us together, agreement or disagreement, we're talking about the same issues, and we're trying to get to some solutions. And this is a private sector solution, and it's a very good one. So in general, this is just one step, and I think a longer process. If I try to do a one-size-fits-all and think we're going to solve every problem right now, it's not going to happen. Through the forty years that I've seen this problem develop, we continually stumble over the same old things, every city, every municipality, just doing the same things. Here we have a chance for something fresh and new, that our county officials have really put their, you know, they put their nose to the grindstone, really making something that is substantive, is it perfect, does it have everything nailed down? It's never going to have everything nailed down. But I appreciate the effort, I appreciate even the folks that I disagree with on some of this, because some of their issues are really important. The water issue, super important, fire evacuation, super important, these are all things we need to look at. But it's not, none of these are reasons not to do this. This is step one in trying to get this whole problem solved. We have a county of about a hundred and two thousand people, we're not that large, I think we could craft some solutions that we can agree on and make work, and come back to a body like this where we all have oversight. I feel like I'm part of an oversight committee here, because we get to comment to you about what we see, you get to take our observations and hopefully put them into place somehow. So again, thanks to everybody for all the efforts going into this, we really want to see this thing solved, this is step one. Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Hello, my name is Scott Norp, I'm the Firewise Lead for my neighborhood in Nevada City. And I had a lot of comments written down, but realizing a lot of them have been covered already, so I'm, it's quite spellbinding, but I'll, I'll just kind of cut to the chase. I do think this is a dangerous ordinance, and mainly because RVs are not meant to be permanent dwellings. If you've ever looked on YouTube, just Google "RVs burning," and you'll see they go up quite quickly and prevent, created a very dangerous situation for the rest of us. Also worried about enforcement, we've got, California has fifty percent of the nation's unsheltered homeless population. A lot of those people are in RVs in cities like San Francisco and Oakland, which apparently we're trying to emulate Oakland here. And those cities are cracking down on them, and once they hear we're the only county in the country, or in the, in the state that allows this, you're going to have people coming up in their RVs, and they're going to hear, oh, the enforcement is not really that strong, so, you know, we can probably get away with an illegal RV settlement. So that would be, those would be a couple of my concerns. My other concern is just health issues. I mean, if you see, have seventeen thousand people sued FEMA during Katrina situation, it was for things like, unhealthy things in, in the trailers which are built to RV specs. So I think there's a lot more to consider here than just, you know, throw RVs out there, hook them up to septic and electric and call it a day. So, other than that, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi there, greetings to everyone. My name is Tony Hances, I've lived in Rough and Ready for nine years. And in the words of one of your code compliance officers, by the way, I'm against this, and I think most people are, I have a bad actor in my neighborhood on a nine-foot gravel road that lives down the street, less than five hundred feet away. And for almost four years, he has turned his property into a trailer park, with, had three trailers hidden on it. I went to the city, and it took over six months for those trailers to be removed. I don't know if you paid any fines, he lied to your inspectors. Then, three months after that, he put a, another RV on his property, hidden, took nine months for one of your inspectors to get that off his property. And in the meantime, I was worried about sewage, fires, the same thing everyone else is worried about. Then, less than a year ago, before the tiny homes were permitted, he put a tiny home on his property, had not filed anything with the city. The bad actor again, this has put wear and tear on my road in front of me, traffic all the time. Now they took the city, I think, three months, the inspector, to get the tiny home permitted properly. In the meantime, I was worried about the sewage, everything else that people are worried about, the fires. So the, unfortunately, my experience has been the city doesn't even have a way of dealing with bad actors currently, and liars. And no fines have been given to him for constantly lying to the city. I mean, shouldn't there be something against bad actors? I think so. And taxes, I pay my taxes, are these people that are renting to his property? People don't let someone put a tiny house on their property without charging rent. Is he paying taxes? Who does that question go to? For, for the income that he's gaining on the rental of the tiny house? Does anyone know the answer to that? Okay, so the city's not getting any benefit, I'm not getting any benefit, I listen to their noise, they're barking dogs, and this is right now, currently, to pass this would just probably increase it for everyone, problems. So I'm, I'm against this, and I've had my experience, and it's all registered with the city. Thank you.
Do I have to press this button? Okay. My name's Bill Lawrence, I live in Nevada County, just outside of Grass Valley. I don't live on three acres, so this wouldn't be a personal endeavor, but I want to thank you commissioners for listening to us and hearing us. Change is hard, change is very hard. I think back to the discussions over the health education and welfare building on Willow Valley Road, which could become housing. People don't want it, some people don't want it. Think about the marijuana grow issue, we even have cannabis compliance, and three inspectors. Here's my point. Enforcement would be key if this ordinance were to pass. If we have illegal housing right now, as you mentioned, right? We need to clean that up first. We need to make sure that the building department, code enforcement, and environmental health can handle some of these issues, whether they be historic, current, or future. I think that would need to be evaluated. I've heard that some of these properties could become RV heaven for Airbnb. I don't think so. If someone has money to come up here and recreate, they're not going to recreate in a little thirty-foot RV. I don't worry about that. I guess what I'm saying is, if we've only had five tiny house applications in the last year, that's not overwhelming. Given the hoops and the cost that the property owner and the renter, I guess you'd call that person, would have to go through, I don't see a lot of people applying for this in a formal way. I do see some potential for people doing it rogue, under the carpet or under the rug or whatever, but I don't see that being a huge problem. And if we get five evaluations or five applications, I think Nevada County could handle it. What I, I only have fourteen seconds, give me a break. I also think that this could be an ordinance that could face a sunset should all hell break loose and we see people coming in from wherever. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, Chair Millman and Commissioners. I'm Bob Branstrom, a resident of the city of Grass Valley and a former Grass Valley City Council member. I appreciate your discussion with staff and the breadth and depth of your questions. It's been informative, so thank you for that. A few weeks ago, I was walking to the grocery store and passed a guy with a backpack, obviously without a home. He wouldn't look me in the eye. In my experience, this is what happens when people feel undervalued and left out of mainstream society. This breaks my heart. A little over a year ago, an article on housing and homelessness in the union opened with this sentence, "Low wages, high rents, and the lack of affordable housing are the primary causes of the homeless housing crisis in California," according to a study from the University of California, San Francisco. Nevada County can't do much about low wages. Affordable housing means subsidized housing in practice, and monies to subsidize housing are rare and insufficient. However, increasing the housing supply can ease pressure in the housing market and lower the price of rental housing. More importantly, increasing the supply of housing is what we need to help address the human tragedy that is our unhoused population. I want to make a point here. People are adaptable. People will find a way to solve their problems as best they can. That's already happened here, with hundreds of people now living in RVs around Nevada County. People adapt faster than governments, that's a fact. So what I am asking of you today is to catch up with unhoused problem solvers have already figured out, RVs provide a viable source of housing. The county has an obligation to ensure that housing is safe, that's what this ordinance is about. It creates standards to ensure that housing is safe for both the people living in it and for their neighbors. Building traditional stick-built homes and ADUs is costly, beyond the reach of many investors and homeowners. This RV ordinance provides property owners with the opportunity to put in lower-cost housing. Lower cost means lower rents for people with lower incomes. In short, this ordinance provides a legal pathway for local homeowners to invest in our community to help solve a critical problem. Please support this ordinance. Let's let our unhoused people know that Nevada County cares. Maybe they'll be able to look us in the eye again. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Let that line die down. My name is Jay, I'm a resident of Nevada City, I live up off Vanuva Cap, towards the top of the hill. I'm going to echo some of the concerns with regards to code compliance. I have firsthand experience, I've just in the last three months submitted four complaints, one of which was addressed within three days. And the response to that was, your claim was unfounded. It took me five emails to try and get them to come forth and say, well, what did you discover? Did you talk to... Well, they said, yeah, I... forth and say, well, what did you discover? Did you talk to? Well, they said, yeah, I ended up talking to a lady. I'm not sure if she was the property owner or not, but there were no concerns at the time. And so I didn't see anything. But here we have a backlog of over 300 concerns. Yep, this person was able to give me an answer in three days, and he actually went and talked to the landowner. That's what he says. Also at a previous meeting, previous me, uh-oh. Previous meeting, it was made clear that code enforcement does not have the resources to manage this. You can go back and look at video and you'll see it stated very clearly, they do not. Now, it was said earlier today that they feel they do. They don't. They have three people for cannabis control. I think he says there's one person per region. I'm not sure how that's all divvied up. There's 350 in the backlog right now. I can double that in a week. Take a drive from here, follow me home, and I can point out at least 20 or 30 that are in violation right now. I'm against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like that concludes the public meeting. We hear everybody that wanted to speak. Okay. We'll close the public hearing then and allow staff some time to summarize responses.
Well, Commissioners, if you have any specific questions, happy to answer them. But touch on a couple of points. First of all, creating the ordinance is definitely a balance with trying to achieve affordability, but also provide some standards and some oversight. So, you know, we heard a lot from, it doesn't go far enough, or it's too onerous and too expensive. Anytime the county is going to issue a permit, we're going to have to do it with some set of standards in mind. And so we are trying to make it fair as possible, but also apply basically the same standards that we would apply to stick-built buildings. The issue regarding enforcement, you've heard from the director that they feel they can handle the caseload. The passing of an ordinance doesn't create more violations. There's already, it's not legal to live in an RV. People are living in an RV right now. Creating an ordinance that allows a path to compliance simply creates standards to be able to be enforced so that those that choose to try to go down that path and wish to be compliant can have a set of standards and a permitting path to be compliant. It's not going to erase the violations that occur now. It's not necessarily going to create new ones. It's simply an ordinance that allows, sets out a set of standards in order to be compliant. Because right now, the option is, there is no option. You can't live in an RV. So what we've tried to do is come up with reasonable standards that will do as much as we can to protect the health and safety. We've talked a lot about the septic hookups, the water hookups, electrical hookups, and how all that's going to work, fire safety issues. All those same standards apply to a stick-built building, which would apply to a recreational vehicle. So, yeah, there are costs involved in that. There is inspections and oversight that's required, but it's very difficult to have it both ways. To have either no cost and ensure safety, or to have high cost and guarantee safety, which is what we're trying to do, at a reasonable cost and achieve that balance. We've talked about, you know, central RV camp. Again, this is one tool in the toolbox to try to address affordable housing. I know there's a lot of conversations that continue to occur with our Health and Human Services Agency, and even with, in CDA, to look at other options, running a camp, whether that's an RV camp or, you know, stick-built type structures. Yeah, that option's always being looked at, considered. There's, it's a whole different ball of wax in terms of issues and problems. Other cities, some do, are effective at it. We've seen problems in the City of Sacramento, County of Sacramento, even Placer County. So this ordinance is not meant to solve every problem. It's meant to be an option. We've tried to craft it to achieve a balance of, yeah, there's going to be some level of cost, but there is the oversight that tries to ensure that it's, any development is done in a, in a manner that's going to have the health and safety assurances that we would with a normal stick-built building, while being a little bit more affordable, because there's not the construction costs, there's not the material costs, there's not the cost of a, of a house. It's the cost of a 320-square-foot RV. So our, our attempt was to, you know, come up with reasonable standards that were more affordable. They're not going to be affordable for everyone. And, you know, if, if we want to talk about some of the specific standards, happy to go into more of those details. There was a comment regarding two ADUs that I had said only two ADUs had been approved. We average about 20, 25 ADUs a year. I'm not sure what comment you may have been referencing, but it may have been with the master plans, where I think we've only maybe permitted two with those master plans as ADUs. And then, again, we're trying to achieve a balance, but happy to answer any other questions or discuss the, the standards of the ordinance with you further.
Commissioner Garce, do you have any other questions?
I had a question about the lot sizes. You stated earlier that three-acre parcels are about the size of a property that is viable for a septic and a well. My question is, is why not include sites that can be tied to public utilities, which would be smaller, smaller properties? Is there, is that the reason for excluding smaller properties? Is mandating onsite wastewater drainage?
I mean, I think that's some of it. I think it's more likely that these will be located on septic or well-type properties. Smaller properties are going to have smaller setbacks. So a three acre, you're not going to find many parcels that are less than three acres in the zoning districts that we've identified. Most of those parcels in those end districts start at about three acre. Sure, there may be some that are less than three. But when you get under three acres, you have like a five or a 10-foot setback versus a 30-foot setback for a three-acre parcel. So they become a little bit, everything gets, you know, squeezed into a single lot. So it's going to be closer to the neighbors. It's going to be, you know, closer to the street. It's going to have to ensure that it has the proper setbacks. If it's not on public water sewer, there's probably an option that we could build in. It, it just potentially opens it up for the other issues about reduced setbacks or smaller setbacks visibility. And so that was kind of the balance to try to accommodate onsite services with larger parcels that they could be set back further and not be right on top of the neighbors.
Okay. Thank you. I also want to just commend you guys for tackling this. I met with Tyler Barrington after the May 17, or 27th kickoff meeting and recognized the immense challenge that was before you in formulating something that hadn't really been done before. And I think that it strikes a really fine line between going too far and not doing enough. And, and I think you guys have done a, a good job at that difficult task, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner McAtire?
Well, as you know, I'm not shy, so I have a number of questions still. From the community, in reading 300 pages of comments, I'm interested in a couple of comments from you. So Michael Taylor says, "Why shouldn't we just have the landlords be the applicant for such, instead of having this misinterpretation that you might have a, a RV owner come in and apply compared to the, to know that then the, does the, does the homeowner, landowner, agree with such?" So can you respond to that?
Yeah, the landowner would have to apply.
Period.
We would need authorization from the landlord or landowner. Someone could be an applicant, but we cannot permit anything without owner permission and-
So I come in and I own a RV and I say, "I've got the Smith's approval to put it on their property." You say, "Show me the Smith's."
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we have an owner authorization form.
Okay. Now, I know, you know, fixer-upper homes, you know, if they go and disrepair, people can fix them up and sell them, and that's the nature of homeownership. I'm concerned, and Paul Elias notes that a security bond might be a good idea in terms of, you know, at some point, the, the RVs do not have a hundred-year life to them. So we have all these RVs that have run out of life, or fallen down, or whatever else. Somebody said that they had three of them on their, or next-door neighbors or so that they can't get rid of. Is there any movement towards ever getting rid of these things? And maybe that's a code compliance. I mean, do, do we actually have people being told, "Get your prop, get your old RV off your property," and it's your cost?
Yeah, I can let Matt ask, but at some point, they become solid waste. And so those things, we do have programs, and you're not allowed to have excessive solid waste onsite. And so it can become a nuisance and a code violation for solid waste. It depends on if they're operable. If they're non-operable, then there's other non-operable vehicle requirements that you can only have certain, so many on a piece of property, but-
Matt? Chair Millman, Commissioner McAtire. Yeah, so the, we do have provisions in our zoning code that do talk about alternative, or they talk about abandoned vehicles. And there are limitations on how many abandoned vehicles or inoperable vehicles you can have on your property. An RV would be considered one of those. And there's provisions in code that require that they be screened from view, they're out of the public view. Mostly, it's from the public right-of-way. That's usually where code compliance is, is things that we can see from the public right-of-way. So the, I mean, if an RV became dilapidated or became otherwise considered solid waste, we would be able to enforce the provisions of code that would allow for it to be removed, provided we received a complaint for it.
So a neighbor complains, since I'm getting that, it's the only way you sort of show up. A neighbor complains that there's a piece of junk sitting over on somebody's property. It's falling down. And then that's that homeowner's responsibility to move that item and pay for its removal down to McCartney Road?
Yes.
Can you answer Paul Elias's other question, which was, "You have a reporting system, I gather, that you must tell who you are. You have to say, 'I'm Bob Smith,' and then when the, when the, your officer goes out there, they say, 'I got a complaint,' and the, and the homeowner can say, 'Who, who filed the complaint?' You say, 'Bob Smith.' Is that correct?
Commissioner McAtire, no, we do not. So investigative services requests, or ISRs, they are submitted, they have to be submitted by a member of the public. However, the name on the ISR itself is not releasable, except by court order. That's because there's confidentiality in those. We do allow people to submit confidential cannabis complaints for illicit cannabis grows, because that's a little bit different. But for code violation cases, we actually need the reporting party to sign the actual complaint form.
Okay. Thank you. Don't, don't ever leave here with me. So Alyssa Mayo, Alyssa Mayo brings up ag housing, you know, and I think that that's something that, that have, did you take into account the idea that maybe some vineyards and horse farms, et cetera, need multiple housing, and it might be in something other than a, a structure?
Yeah, and, and an RV could qualify for ag housing.
But that would be one. They could put one on, on their property.
Correct. You know, other, ag housing, you can have multiple structures, but at this time, not RVs. They'd have to be manufactured homes or stick-built homes, but they can't have multiple housing if they're qualified for agricultural workers.
And, and why, why isn't it allowed to be able to put an RV on a raw piece of land? If I say I'm willing to put the septic system and do all these things, could I put one RV on a raw piece of land?
Not as the ordinance is currently written. It needs to be developed with a primary dwelling, and that's to cut down costs to take advantage of already existing facilities, utilities that are onsite. And there's a little bit of kind of the, the oversight or the landlord oversight that can help with the maintenance and the, just to make sure that it's, you know, like you would oversee your rental unit, you have a little bit of site control.
Okay.
Mr. McAtire?
Yes?
Can I just clarify for the record? And the county does have an employee housing ordinance that allows for temporary use of an RV for up to six months for agricultural use.
Uh-huh.
In our resource-based, which is the county permitted employee housing, which will allow up to four units.
Great. Thank you. So Hal Reedus, Redless, wants to know, and I don't know, you've been in these conversations, does, does doing this help the county unlock more housing funds from the state of California, or this has absolutely no relationship to anything from the state?
It, it could in a roundabout, semi-interdirect way. We have regional needs, regional housing need allocation numbers that need to be met. And these units could qualify if they are permitted and allowed for our very low and extremely low income levels, which is some of the criteria that we need to meet our RENA numbers in order to qualify for grants and loans through the state. So in that sense, it could help, just by providing additional housing stock at a lower affordability, which is looked on favorable by the state.
Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Durkin notes, questions, "Why not prohibit the removal of RVs during an evacuation? Why not put into the, why not put into this ordinance that provision?"
I think some of it was just fairness that we don't prohibit anybody else from removing any other type of vehicle or personal property during evacuation. And so we didn't want to single out someone who's living in an RV when the neighbor may have a recreational vehicle that they're not living in, and they don't have any prohibition from removing that during an evacuation. So fairness issue.
Okay. So Joanne Rabaine wants to know, and it's over to you, Matt, what are the penalties that people, if I, I live next door to a person that has an RV on their property, I phone you and it's an illegal RV, and you go over there and you say you've got an illegal RV, you have to do X, Y, and Z to be able to make it compliant, and they don't. Tell me, tell me what, can you give me, since I've never heard this, so tell me what, what the process is?
Certainly. So that would be a code violation case. And each, each code violation case is very different. They're not all the same, because they all have different, different parts. So we would go out and do, once we receive the investigative services request, we'll typically go out and see what we can, if we can verify the violation. Would do it from the public right-of-way. If we have permission from the reporting party to go on their property, we will do that.
So I don't give you permission to go, I mean, I'm now the owner of this. I say, you have to ask permission from the owner to be able to come on and say, "Hey, owner, you have, I have a concern." Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
So if I, if I understand your question correctly, so as the property owner who has the code violation, you can absolutely tell my staff to leave, and we will. The reporting party, if, say they're the next-door neighbor, is complaining about their, their property next door. If they give us permission to go onto their property, the reporting party's property, we can do that, but only by invitation. We do not trespass onto property. It's only if the, we can see the violation or verify the violation from the right-of-way itself. That's-
Okay, so you can't. So let's just say you can't. You can't see this RV. It's behind a lot of trees, so you just drive on the property. Yes or no?
Well, we can go to the front door-
Yeah.
-and try to talk to the property owner.
Okay.
We do not go beyond that. We do not trespass on property. So we would then reach out to the reporting party and generally say that we're not able to view the violation and go from there. We, we try to, try to be as proactive as we can with the reporting party. However, we're not able to verify all violations, because we just simply cannot see it.
So now, this is news to me. I don't know about anyone else, but, so the only way you can go on the property is if you see the violation?
We have to be able to see the violation and verify it from the right-of-way, yes. Or the neighboring property if we-
And that's by law or by your, your, you know, way of doing business?
I mean, I would defer to counsel, but that is typically, I mean, people have a right to private property, and the Fourth Amendment guarantees private property rights. So we are bound by California state law as well as federal law.
Well, an officer can drive up to my front door and say, "Knock, knock, knock."
Right.
He doesn't have to see something going wrong.
We can do that. We can go up to the front door and, and, I mean, if we can, but we need to verify the violation from the public right-of-way.
Am I missing something? Go ahead.
No, Mr. Kelly is correct.
No, Mr. Kelly is correct, that there's a Fourth Amendment right to privacy. And so, if you wanted to go on without the owner's permission, you would require a warrant, which the code compliance department can apply for a warrant if they need to.
Okay. So, now I drive up to the property, because I've seen this RV on the property. Now, what takes place? And the owner of the home comes to the front door. Now, what happens?
So, if we're able to verify the violation, we will then send the property owner a 30-day notice of violation warning. It's a violation warning letter. The property owner has 30 days to bring the property into compliance. From there, if there's no response to that, we will send a notice of violation, or a citation warning letter. That's 60 days into the process. If there's no response to that, we will then start sending citations, and we will do that every 30 days. And continuing on until third, fourth, fifth level citations, we could be six months in or more, where we then start having a different conversation with the property owner to try to bring the property into compliance. We do issue citations.
And so, you know, somebody just says, whiffs off the citations, you know, it's sort of like parking tickets, you know, forget it. Okay. Now, I'm interested in, hold on, I just lost my train of thought, so sorry, it'll come back to me. Let's go on to, let's stay there, it'll come back, my pea brain. I'm really concerned that none of the, none of the letters to us came from any fire district or fire agency. And the biggest issue out there amongst everyone, whether you want to put a RV on a property or not, happens to be fire protection. So, let me just tell you, since I do my homework, is I phoned the chief of Consolidated Fire, Jason Robatell, and I said, "Chief, are you coming to the ordinance meeting? Because I'm really interested in hearing what the fire departments have to say." And he said, "No, I haven't been invited." I said, "Well, that's too bad. I'm inviting you if you want to come." And moreover, he said, "I never received the ordinance." So, I'm sort of asking, why didn't Consolidated, which happens to be overseeing many of these three parcel acreage, not been invited?
Commissioner McHale, I don't know that they weren't, they were not invited. We route the draft ordinance to all the districts, and we have our fire planner, Dan Collins, who spoke earlier, review the ordinance and provide comments. So, it's not uncommon to not get comments from certain districts. But we did develop the ordinance with Dan's oversight, because he's in-house, he's in the planning department, and he usually provides some of that correspondence and liaison with the other fire districts. But given the standards, I don't know, they didn't comment.
So, you're saying, you're telling me that every fire district received this ordinance and was asked to comment?
About four or five. Penn Valley, Higgins, Consolidated.
And we got no, we got no response from any of them, that putting RVs out there in their districts would have an effect?
Do you remember, Tyler?
I don't have the file, but yeah, we sent it to everyone, and we did not receive any comments from any of the fire districts.
Okay. Well, that's a different story than what I heard from the chief, and so...
We did, we did an initial distribution, before we drafted the ordinance, to all those agencies, saying, "Give us your comments, and your thoughts, and feedback to help inform the ordinance." Then, once the ordinance was prepared, we also sent it out again to all those agencies, saying, "Here's the draft ordinance, provide us comments."
And the Zippo?
Zippo.
Thank you. Okay. Now, I'd like to focus in on my questions regarding the cost to the homeowner to be able to put this in place. I think, I'm concerned that the costs are so high, that what happens, what it forces people to do will be to run end on the ordinance. We'll say there's an RV ordinance, but you look at it, and you say, "Wow, the costs are so high, that all of a sudden, I'm not willing to do some of those standards." So, I'd like to sort of ferret out some of these costs. I've heard today that the inspection fee is somewhere around $2,300. I've heard that you have to purchase a 500-gallon tank. I have no idea what a 500-gallon tank is, but I'm just going to guess, for the sake of conversation, $1,000 for, that's a fairly big tank. And then, to be able to make the property defensible space, there's going to have to be some clearing done of some sort. And so, let's just say you get a crew in there, and we say, "Another thousand." And then, we have this four-inch, the cheapest way to do this, according to the person I spoke to at Hanson Brothers, Brett, is to put a four-inch gravel bed, compacted, for your RV and your parking lot. He gave me a quote with some minor grading of $5,000, to be able to do the grading and the rock, not including what it's going to cost for a driveway. And then, we have the dedicated electrical, so I know, I don't know the cost on that, but I'll just sort of throw out $1,500 to get an electrician to be able to run it from the house over somewhere. And then, we have another, we didn't talk about ground-mounted propane tanks. You'd need, you can't operate off a five-gallon tank, I would suspect, so you need a permit for that. And then, we come to the cost relative to the sewage system, which we've learned, you have to pump it all out, and do something to see that the lines are capable, and then you have to dig a trench and put a hard pipe in the trench. So, I mean, I talked to Chris Navo, who is a former student of mine at Navo and Sons. I said, "Chris, what's it going to cost to be able to do that?" And he said, "$4,000." Are there other costs, Brian, that I'm not seeing, as I've sort of outlined for you today?
Commissioner McHale, I don't know. Every property's going to be different.
Do you have to file a site plan, as an example?
Yes.
Is that, there's a cost in filing the site plan? Is that included in the $2,300?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have to do any property line verification in order to ensure that the RV is actually on the person's property?
Potentially.
Potentially. Is that included in the $2,300?
No.
Okay. Tell me, how about the compaction of the rock bed? If we just put those rocks in there, that's, there's another form of having to do the compaction. Is that, is that something that's tested by the county?
There would be compaction reports given to the county.
Okay. And is the, and we have to test for the well, because we have to know that it gets six gallons or more per minute, correct?
Right. There'll be well-drilling records.
Well-drilling records that you could obtain, or you need a new report relative to that?
Depends on if we have the drilling records, or if it's a new well, or if it's an existing well. So, it's all dependent. It's just like any other development.
Okay. Well, I think the average is that somebody's had a well in there for a long time, and now, they're going to have to be able to prove it. So, there's going to have to be some potential cost of the well, and even the hookup to the well. So, let's put that another $500. Are there anything that you have to do regarding structural calculations of the RV to ensure that it can withstand snow loads, et cetera?
As long as it has the ANSI insignia, then...
Then it's okay?
Yeah, unless it's above 3,200 feet, then there would probably be structural requirements for the Ramada or the cover.
So, I'm somewhere around $20,000. Is that, am I way out of the line on that?
Like I said, every parcel's different. I could see that being a cost for some parcels, for sure.
Well, that's not even putting in any new septic system. That's tying into the existing septic system. But it is putting down a pad, which I don't think anyone else would have. So, what I really am just, you know, what's going to happen is that all these people who want to get into these RVs, and the homeowner who says, "Oh, sure, I can put an RV, you can put an RV on my property, I'm great with that." And all of a sudden, the homeowner looks at a $20,000 cost, sort of a minimum cost, as I sort of see it, a $20,000 cost, and he says, "Oh, I don't want to go through that. I don't want to go through the process, the bureaucracy, everything else, the time. Why don't you just move on? We'll get the water taken care of, et cetera, et cetera." And they skirt the ordinance. That's what I see that's about to happen here. Okay? This, so what we're doing, it's the magnet effect, that somebody said, is what you do is you open the door, and you say, "Oh, we want people to do RVs for affordable housing." And what we actually get is, we get more RVs, but they're all illegally placed, because no one wants to jump through the $20,000 hoop. How am I, how off am I on this, Mr. Foss?
I'm not sure. I think you're sharing your opinions.
I understand that. But do you share the idea that if it's so expensive, that all of a sudden, people might say, "The hell with working with the county, I'll run end on it"?
Yeah, I think that's happening now. That happens with everything.
Well, as I understand, in talking to Chief Robatell, or whatever his name is, sorry, Chief, I'll just say Chief, he said, "In Lake County, a similar ordinance took place, and it's been an absolute disaster," from his fire perspective, from what's happened in Lake County. Do you have any understanding that it's occurred in Lake County?
No. Lake County passed an emergency proclamation that allowed you to stay in an RV in a burned scar.
I'm sorry. I completely missed what you said. Sorry, Tyler.
Tyler Barrington.
Yeah.
Based on my research, Lake County passed an emergency proclamation, and allowed people to live in an RV in the burned scar, so areas that were burnt. So, it's not the same apples to apples.
Okay.
And again, just to remind the commission, we're talking about land use. And so, you know, our purview in the planning department, formerly planning department, is to look at regulations specific to land use.
I understand that.
I recognize that there's going to be costs, but that's not our charge.
Correct.
As a department.
But as...
Nor is it the planning commission, who also oversees land use.
Yeah, I think that it is a factor with, relative to my decision-making, for the fact that I'm concerned, as a planning commissioner, that this ordinance invites people to run end on it. Okay? Thank you. Those are my questions.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions?
Nice thing about being on this with Terry, you know, you just sit back and listen to him ask all her questions. Thanks, Terry.
You're welcome, Steve.
Yeah, I mean, I'll second that. Terry said a lot there. You know, I think, I think there's a good, I think the idea of this is in the right direction. I think for the people that want to be good actors, this is a way to transition and do that. I do feel the same questionable nature that Terry does, is that the unintended consequences of this are that the people that are advocating for this are not going to be able to afford to do it, and the property owner that goes through these steps is going to have to recover their costs and pass that on to the people in need. However, you know, I think we all understand that housing is an issue in the county. I think if there's ways to do it, it even helps some. It's a good thing, because, you know, we still have, like you said, the problem is still out there. I think the flip side of that is, is if you create a legal pathway forward for people to do it, there has to be somewhat of an enforcement mechanism on the back end, to ensure that it works in some regard. And it sounds like, there's a lot of people out there that are minding their own business that are not causing problems, but it sounds like, from not only the public comments today, but also all the letters that we receive from the public, that there are serious issues out there. And that the apprehension that people have to this ordinance is mainly due to those personal experiences that people are having. And so, I think, you know, with one comes the other. We have to find a way to, you know, hold those bad actors to account, so they're not, you know, trashing the neighborhoods and potentially starting fires. So, I'm not sure what the solution is there, other than maybe to, you know, make an amendment or suggestion to the board that the enforcement mechanism be somewhat researched into some kind of a transition period, to allow for the change to take place, to reach some kind of balance. And then, you know, some kind of tiered or structured approach to give the county enough teeth to go after the people that are actually impacting the neighborhoods negatively. I think that's where I'm at.
So, I think we've heard a lot of these same arguments when we talked about whether or not we were going to do the ADUs. I think we heard a lot of these same arguments when we talked about tiny homes. And I think that what we're really talking about here is not solving for the people that aren't going to do it the right way, but that we allow a path for the people that are looking for a good way, or for another way. I know I've looked several times into building an ADU on my property, and it's an awful lot more than $20,000 to create another house. And if I had the option of $20,000 plus the cost of a trailer versus the $200,000 or $300,000 that it's going to cost to place an ADU, I think that this is a good option to have. And I appreciate that you guys have put this together and brought this before us.
I know. Steve, did you have any comments?
Steve wanted to stand up and stretch.
Yeah, I got a bad back, so this is torture for me. You know, kind of reiterating what you said, my thought is, the initial cost is going to be prohibitive for the great majority of people that this would benefit. You know, you outlined some of the costs. You could be a little off, you know, but, you know, I think that's why we only had, whatever the number is, five tiny homes to, you know, connect to the electricity that may be across the street and down. You got to put in a new, I ran into that on one of my properties. You know, you got to put up a new transformer, because the electric to the main property is over here, and the ADU's over here. So, there's no way to know, like Brian said, the exact cost, but it's going to be prohibitive, I think, for a lot of people. Therefore, I think that there will be a lot of non-compliance, and then that goes to the code enforcement. I'm very worried about that. You've got, if my math's correct, 351 open violations, and you have four officers, so that's 84 violations per officer right now. And I, again, have personal experience, like a lot of these, where old folks died two doors down from me, people moved in, lady, daughter, living in a car, no electricity, no water, squatters everywhere, and it took a year for you guys to do anything about it, and it was very frustrating, with a number of neighbors calling. So, I can't say that I'm confident that you will be able to handle this increased load. I'm not against the ordinance. I just don't see how it's going to function properly. And I'd like to see some way of, you know, it's a budgetary thing, I'm well aware of the budget, but hiring more code enforcement officers. That would be my suggestion, if there's more code enforcement officers. That may change my opinion, but I just don't see how your staff can handle this, so...
Right. But we're talking about how we're needing to decide the land use side of things, right? So, if we think that this is a legitimate and useful tool for land use to create this path, and then that creates a code enforcement, then that moves to another plate, like, that's another body, that's another, that's a budgeting issue in terms of later, right? I don't know that trying to solve the potential code enforcement problems through the ordinance is necessarily the place to look at it.
I disagree.
Okay. Fair enough.
I'd also like to respond to Commissioner French's comments. My understanding from what the planning department and code enforcement has said today... today is that by passing this ordinance, we are not creating more code compliance issues. There are issues that exist at a scale to which they already exist. And this problem isn't going to get better by us not approving this. There's nothing, no benefit to the bad, like, this problem that exists, where bad actors are illegally living on RVs, on properties, prob, but probably in ways that we prefer them not to, when it comes to wastewater disposal and things like that. Um, what this ordinance does, and what we have the power to do today, is to allow people a way to do that in a safe and respectful way that I think most people here would approve of if they saw it in practice. Um, so I think I disagree with the idea that we need more teeth behind approving this proposal, this ordinance, because I don't see an approval of this ordinance as causing a bigger problem than we already have.
Hey, hey, hey.
Yeah, and just for the record, I wasn't, I wasn't suggesting that we don't pass the ordinance unless there's more teeth to it. I think that's something for the supervisors to discuss, that, you know, with this pathway forward, that they, under, they're going to talk about all these concerns that we've discussed, and I'm sure they're going to deliberate on that, and that, um, and they're going to hear the same community issues that we have, and, um, they can decide what to do with it from there. But I wasn't suggesting that we, um, not pass.
Are we ready to...
No, I, I have a comment, though. See, I, I'll say that I'm, I'm voting no today. And my no is really a statement to the Board of Supervisors, because I know that it's going, we all know it's going to the Board of Supervisors. We're not the end-all, be-all. And so my no vote is essentially saying to them, "You have to address the code enforcement issue. You have to address the cost issue before you can think that, that this, this body thinks that this is a good idea." And so those are my, that's why I'm voting no today. Not that I don't care about how unhoused people, I was a school superintendent, I had seven, we have 700 young kids out there, couch surfing. We need to address the issue, but you can't address the issue, in my view, until you address the cost of this and until you address how this is going to be enforced or lack there. Because if we, if, if, if this passes, then what it's saying to all the people out there who are illegally in, in, or RVs is, "Oh, well, that's okay." And I don't think it's okay. That's why we have laws and that's why we have codes. We just can't sort of say, "Oh, well, all those people are, are not compliant and we'll just, we'll just close our eyes." That's my view.
Hey, hey, we need to not have the reaction from the, or we're going to need to have folks removed. That's how it always is in Planning Commission, so we just need to, we just need it to not be cheering section back and forth. We understand where you guys stand and we need the space to be able to just have this conversation. Thank you.
I have a quick question. Um, another thing I heard today was that there was a moratorium on, um, removal of people living in RVs. And is that tied, my question is, is that tied to this ordinance's review at this time? And what would happen if this ordinance were to be approved?
Uh, Commissioner Garst, there is. So there, we do have a moratorium presently that the board, um, asked us to put in place. And so, um, this, or the moratorium runs with the ordinance, um, so, and at the direction of, in the direction of the board. So if the ordinance was to, um, not pass by the board, then we would end the moratorium unless the board extended it. Um, that, but that is up to the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you. Um, I have another question today that's more of a point of order. Uh, if, if for some, if this ordinance proposal is voted no today, it's not like a project proposal vote. What happens at that point?
Uh, Commissioner Garst, um, it would be moved to the Board of Supervisors that the commission voted to not pass the ordinance, and then they would take that into consideration.
So it moves forward regardless?
Yes.
Okay, I think I'd like to make a motion to approve the, do we start with one? I'd like to make a motion to recommend to the Board of Supervisors, find the project categorically exempt pursuant to sections 15303 and 15305 of the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, as the project does not increase density and permits recreational vehicles as dwellings within those zoning districts that would otherwise allow traditional built home, housing of the same type.
Do I have a second?
How do you vote, Commissioner French?
Hold on, hold on. Did we, did we get a second? I'm sorry.
Well, so this first vote, to clarify, is just to, to say that sequels shouldn't be required because...
Right.
It doesn't increase density.
Correct.
So that's what, that's what the motion on the table is.
I'll, I'll second that.
Thank you. Commissioner French?
So we're voting on the ordinance now?
No.
No.
Steve, you're voting on...
Number one, okay, right, yes, yes. I, yeah, aye, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Foley?
Aye.
Commissioner McAtier?
Aye.
Commissioner Garst?
Aye.
Chair Millman?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'd like to also make a motion to recommend that the Board of Supervisors adopt the ordinance, adding land, adding Nevada County Code Title 12, Zoning Regulations, Chapter 3, Specific Land Uses, Section 12.03.151, Recreational Vehicle Dwellings, to establish health and safety standards, permitting and certification requirements, and site development standards to allow recreational vehicles as dwelling units within those zoning districts that would otherwise allow traditional built housing of the same type. Amending the definition of recreational vehicle in Section 12.06.010, and amending tables 12.02.220.B and 12.02.030, to allow recreation of, recreational vehicles as dwellings in the rural and residential agricultural zoning districts.
Do we have a second?
I think, um, is it possible to make a suggestion to the board as an amendment?
Yes.
I, I agree to approve this, but with the amendment that, I think there were still a lot of unanswered questions out there, particularly with fire insurance, um, with enforcement and with cost. And, um, for the board, for the county to perhaps, um, provide some more thorough information, uh, to the Board of Supervisors before they make their determination.
And Commissioner Foley, you would, by amending, uh, the original motion, that would be a new motion, so there would be no second. That'd be a new motion, which would require a second to support that amendment.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Yes, by making an amendment to, um, Commissioner Garst's original motion, uh, it doesn't second the motion. That creates a new motion that...
Correct.
Another commissioner would then need to second your amended motion.
Okay, so I would, I would create a new motion to recommend, uh, Project Action 2 here with the, with the amendment and suggestion, uh, that the, that the county provide more thorough information regarding fire insurance, uh, and enforcement before they make their determination.
I'll second that.
How do you vote, Commissioner French?
No.
Commissioner Foley?
Yes.
Commissioner McAtier?
No.
Commissioner Garst?
Yes.
And Chair Millman?
Yes.
Thank you.
I want to thank everybody for taking part in this and your participation in this. And have a good evening, everyone. We are concluding this at 5:00.